Okay. Good evening and thank you for viewing the March 4th, March, nope, March 1st, meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Item number one, our, our agenda tonight is a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past action by local, state, and federal governments have removed the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Our second item will be the flag salute, so if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stillman.
Present.
Oh, present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. And just a reminder too, if you're here for early oral communications, we are doing the card system, so we'll take the first four folks here in person, then we'll check in online and come back if we have time for that 15-minute time period. So if you're here to speak on an item not on the agenda at that early time, grab a card, just so we can make sure everybody gets a chance. If you're logged into Zoom, please click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, or if you're on your phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand, and when it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone to speak. For each item, we will be taking the in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you're wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is being accepted for that item. Okay, the next section on our agenda is going to be ceremonial matters, and our first ceremonial matter will be a proclamation recognizing International Women's Day, and that will be read by Councilmember White.
Whereas International Women's Day began in the United States in 1909 and has been celebrated internationally since 1911 and is an official holiday in 28 countries. And whereas, on March 8th, people around the world honor women and girls, recognizing their contributions and supporting their political and social rights. And whereas, women of color, Black and Indigenous women, and women who face oppression based on religion, disability, gender identity or preference, language, culture, or class, and women around the world dealing with war and climate catastrophes have unique perspectives and knowledge that help us all work together towards social, environmental justice, peace, and safety locally and globally. And whereas, all of us benefit from the talent and the spirit of social action that women and girls made into our communities, cities, nation, and world. We continue to thank and honor our women and girls, appreciate their achievements and contributions to society, and support their voices as they work to bring peace, justice, and harmony to the world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes March 8th, 2023, as International Women's Day and encourages all community members to observe this day by participating in local events and working to create a more inclusive world, whereas all genders are able to live to their fullest potential, free from discrimination, oppression, and violence. Dated March 1st, 2023, Mayor Sarah Schaefer.
Thank you. We're from the International Women's, Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, or also known as Wilf, and, and we want to thank you for once again acknowledging International Women's Day. On March 8th next week, we're celebrating it at the Arcata Playhouse, and this year, we're going to have a panel of four civic and community leaders who will be discussing their communities, their community building, and what's working and what they still need to work on. That night, we'll have Supervisor Natalie Arroyo, Rio del Mayor Deborah Garns, Arcata City Councilmember Kimberly White, and Centro del Pueblos Director Brenda Perez. And there will be time for questions from those who participate, and it also will be on the Playhouse's YouTube. So it'll be at the Arcata Playhouse, and the panel will be followed by singing led by Jan Bramlett and Leslie Quinn, songs that involve peace, freedom, and activism. And I'm Carolyn, this is Martha, and she'll give you a little more information about the rest of the events that week.
I talk too much, so I tried to get this down to three sentences. Zero to Fierce starts this coming Saturday, the 3rd, and goes through the 12th. It's going to be at the Arcata Playhouse. It's a festival, week-long festival, celebrating women's creativity and achievements. And for details of the week's events, go to zerotofierce.org, all spelt out. And I think most things are registered. There are a lot of free events, couple things pay a little bit, ours is free, and...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation will be in recognition of Girl Scout Week, March 12th through 18th, 2023, and I will be reading this proclamation, and as a former Arcata Girl Scout, I am happy to do so. So whereas, March 12th, 2023, marks the 111th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Gordon Low of Savannah, Georgia in 1912. And whereas, throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character, helping girls gain leadership skills and learn lifelong lessons of contributing to their communities. And whereas, Girl Scouting increases girls' awareness of opportunities available to them today in math, science, sports, technology, government, and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas, this year, more than 2.4 million Girl Scouts nationwide, of which 25,000 of these are in the Girl Scouts of Northern California and 300 within Humboldt County, celebrate 111 years of this American tradition. They look to the 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts as living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Seventy-six percent of the female senators in the US Congress, 58% of female US House of Representatives, and all three former female Secretaries of State, nearly all female astronauts, and numerous successful businesswomen such as Sariel Sandberg and Melinda Gates have all been Girl Scouts. Five of the nine current female governors are Girl Scout alumni. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes the week of March 12th through 18th, 2023, as Girl Scout Week and applauds Girl Scouting's commitment to developing leadership skills of America's girls. So dated today, March 1st, 2023, and signed by myself, Sarah Schaefer, Mayor, and we have some Girl Scouts and troop leaders from Troop 90018 to accept.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am honored to represent our local Redwoods area Girl Scouts. I'm a volunteer for two of our 12 active troops in the area that serve over 125 girls between Arcata McKinleyville and Trinidad. Our cookie booths are coming and will be out in front of local stores starting March 20th, and they serve as a reminder that Girl Scouts is alive and well in Humboldt County. All donations for Care to Share packages are kept right here in Humboldt County, donated to the national, or the local food bank and the Coast Guard stations. As you mentioned, this is the 111th year of Girl Scouts as an organization and our 106th year of Girl Scouts selling cookies. As a leader, I am very thankful that we no longer have to bake them ourselves, as was the case when they began. I want to share why our cookie sale is so important. The most obvious reason is that it provides the money needed to fund activities, camps, and supplies that our Girl Scout troops need, and our council offers a wide range of programs, services, and camp opportunities as well. Over $3 stays right in Northern California to provide programs and support troops serving the over 37,000 girls, including over 320 here in Humboldt County. But there are more important reasons why the cookie program is a valuable tool. This beloved tradition is the largest girl-led entrepreneurial program in the world, and in addition to being fun, it teaches important skills like goal-setting, decision-making, money management, and business, business ethics for those who participate. They also develop wonderful interpersonal skills and confidence with dealing with the public. Being here tonight has also given me a chance to acknowledge the fact that our older girl program here in Humboldt is very active. Of our 12 troops, seven have middle school and high school scouts. They camp, kayak, climb rock walls, hike, do service programs for veterans, senior citizens, and our local animal shelters, along with other community members. They run events for local girls and work at our local residential summer camp, Camp Tall Trees, of which I am the assistant director. They are learning to contribute to society, just like the many Girl Scouts who became astronauts, senators, all three Secretaries of State, and our own Arcata Mayor are all Girl Scout alum. I am pleased to say that we add, we added another gold award, Girl Scout, to Humboldt County. This is the highest award that a Girl Scout can earn, and it was presented to Lacey McGahey. Her project provided new ADA access ramps and better ADA parking to the historic Dow's Prairie Grange in McKinleyville. So the next time you think about Girl Scouts, remember that we are more than selling cookies and making craft projects. Buy that box of Thin Mints or Tagalongs knowing that you're not just helping as part of the most successful leadership and empowerment program for girls and young women, but you are helping your wider community as well. Thank you for the acknowledgement of Girl Scouts.
I look forward to picking up my box of Samoas soon. Okay, and also Councilmember White and Councilmember Stillman were Girl Scouts as well.
I was a Brownie.
Brownie, see, that's a Girl Scout. Yeah, so, there you go. Strong, strong women, strong Girl Scouts, okay. Our last proclamation this evening will be in recognition of Sunshine Week, March 12th through 18th, 2023, and that will be read by Council Vice Mayor Matthews.
All right, City of Arcata proclamation in recognition of Sunshine Week, March 12th through 18th, 2023. Whereas Sunshine Week is a national initiative to start a dialogue on the importance of open government and freedom of information. And whereas Sunshine Week is a nonpartisan initiative whose supporters are conservative, liberal, and from every group in between. Sunshine Week participates include print, broadcast, and online news media, civic groups, libraries, nonprofits, schools, and others interested in public's right to know. And whereas James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives. And whereas an open government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust in their government and in the government's ability to serve the people effectively. The free flow of information keeps the government processes honest and robust. Sunshine Week empowers people to play an active role in their government at all levels and strengthens their access to information that makes their lives better and their community stronger. And whereas protecting every person's right to access public records and government meetings is a high priority. And whereas the League of Women's Voters of Humboldt County supports the goals of Sunshine Week and provides residents with nonpartisan education through public forums, publications, and presentations, assists with voter registration, and encourages informed participation in government. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes March 12th through 18th, 2023, as Sunshine Week and encourages all residents to educate themselves about the government processes that affects their life. Dated March 1st, 2023, signed Sarah Schaefer, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jessica Schlochter, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. The League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. I'd like to encourage those listening to reach out to the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County if you'd like more information on what we do and how you can be involved in local democracy. Remember, make democracy work and vote. Thank you.
And Alex is also a member of the League of Women Voters. We're well, well-represented this evening. Okay, so that's the end of ceremonial matters, and that takes us to item number five on our agenda, which is going to be a report by one of our committees. So we have the annual report from the Economic Development Committee, and we have Serge Mahalo, the chair, here to present that. Take it away, Serge.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Serge Mahalo. This is the Economic Development Committee Annual Report from last year, 2022. I'm the chair of the committee. We also have Vice Chair Humnath Panta, and then Committee Members Walt Geist, Amanda Hickey, Linda Zespoo, and Monique Molina. I'll just go through the introduction here. The Economic Development Committee meets the first Tuesday of every month at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. Last year, due to COVID-19 restrictions, the committee met virtually via Zoom communications for the entirety of 2022. According to Title II, Chapter III, Article 11, 2246 of the Arcata Municipal Code, the powers and duties of the committee are to serve as an advisory, serve in an advisory capacity to the council, commissions, or city staff as appropriate in matters pertaining to economic development, including but not limited to manufacturing and retail, tourism, business expansion and revitalization, and agriculture. To make recommendations to the Community Development Agency Board with respect to plans, projects, and proposals affecting the redevelopment project area within the scope of the redevelopment plan, to review economic trends and to make recommendations to strengthen the economic well-being of the city. Last year, our big accomplishments that we completed in the calendar year were, number one, we discussed community vision, goals, and priorities and potential projects. Number two, we formed a Business of the Year Subcommittee and worked with the City Council Subcommittee to recognize Cententria Winery as the City of Arcata 2022 Business of the Year. Number three, we reviewed the draft Gateway Area Plan and provided recommendations on the economic impact of the plan. And number four, we discussed the Community Ambassador Program. Number five, we discussed the community, or the Plaza Improvement Task Force ideas on how to support downtown businesses. Number six, we reviewed the 2010 to 2014 Economic Development Strategic Plan. Number seven, we discussed the business types located in the area plan, in the Gateway Area Plan boundary. Number eight, we formed a Subcommittee on Ways to Increase Student Involvement in Economic Development in Arcata. Number nine, we received an update on Oyster Fest and what had happened in 2022. Number 10, we reviewed the policies and implementation programs in the draft Gateway Area Plan and made formal recommendations to the City Council. Number 11, we reviewed and updated metrics and the nomination form for the Business of the Year. Number 12, we formed a Business of the Year Subcommittee to review nominations and provide feedback to the City Council for the 2023 Business of the Year. Number 13, we received a presentation by Leila Roberts on the North Coast Small Business Development Center, where we received the presentation. Number 14, we received updates on the Arcata Chamber of Commerce and Arcata Main Street. Number 15, we received a presentation by Anissa Escobedo on the Arcata Chamber of Commerce. And number 16, we received and reviewed local employment and sales tax data on a routine basis. My sheet here says 2022 Goals and Activities, but I believe this is our 2023 Goals and Activities, although they're very similar. Number one, to support economic infill development, including the Arcata Gateway Plan, and to assist with evaluation of the opportunities and constraints regarding commercial and industrial lands for their highest and best use, to review and develop recommendations on future commercial and industrial target markets. Number two, business support. We want to develop strategies for business development and entrepreneurial support, create and support opportunities to address the needs of the local and regional business communities such as, A, support plaza improvements that support public safety, economic development, and community-based events; B, to support the Community Ambassador Program; C, to support the city's sustainable community values, as in zero waste, greenhouse gas reduction, energy independence, active and alternative transportation modes, open space and ecosystems, diverse, affordable housing, commercial and industrial spaces such as incubator cooperatives, small housing, commercial and office spaces; and D, to support the Strategic Arts Plan efforts. And that, those, that's what we did in 2022 and what we plan to do in 2023.
Awesome. Thank you, Serge. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Maybe we can start down at this end and head to the other end, Stacy, if you have anything.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for all that your committee does. We appreciate it.
Serge, how long have you been on the EDC now?
I think this is my third term. It's my second as chair.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for your service, and I just want to say that I really enjoyed sitting with you when we did our committee chair meeting the other week, and I think you brought forward some great ideas about some things that we can do on the plaza, so I'm really looking forward to working with you next year for that. I also really would love to hear more ideas, not now, but eventually, about the Subcommittee that you formed to increase student involvement in our economic development. I think that's wonderful. So thank you so much and all of the EDC.
I'm just gonna say thank you, Serge, and I'll pass it down this way if you guys have any questions or comments.
Thank you for your service, and I too am looking forward to the Subcommittee with Cal Poly Humboldt students.
Well, of course, I was going to ask you, is there a way to see what some of your ideas were about the task for, for supporting downtown businesses and the downtown?
I suppose we could go back and look through, but the biggest thing that we want to do is support the Community Ambassadors Program, which was pretty revolutionary and seems to be making a big difference.
It's, it's an excellent program. It's doing very well, and thank you for your support.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Serge, all right. That now takes us to early oral communication, so if you have one of those cards with a little number on it, line up at the podium here for our in-person commenters. City Council values your comments. This is a 15-minute time period to allow people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements and supported requests that require council action, be either set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers will be limited to two minutes, and there will also be time to have comment on each specific agenda item, and then again at the end of the meeting under item number 12. So again, looks like everybody has made their way to the podium, and if you are on Zoom, now is a good time to raise your hand by, or press *9 if you're calling in by phone and wish to comment. So come on up and take it away.
Good evening. My name is Anton Souza. I'm here again today as a representative of the residents of Ross Street to address pedestrian safety in the Arcata Elementary School Zone at the intersection of Ross and Grant. In September of 2021, every resident of Ross Street signed a traffic calming petition. After our petition was submitted, the city conducted a traffic audit. That audit documented numerous cars driving the wrong way on Grant, which is a one-way street, and that 60% of the total vehicles exceeded the 15 mile per hour school zone speed limit, some driving upwards of 50 miles per hour. We urge you to consider making Ross Street, which the city has already designated a dead end, either a cul-de-sac or a one-way with speed bumps in order to protect the lives of the residents and the children walking to and from school. I would also like to recommend the city, oh, sorry, like to remind the city that their efforts to slow traffic, the striping and the narrowing of the road, have not only made the intersection less safe, but have eliminated parking spaces. Please take strides to protect our students, our families, and our neighbors. We respectfully request that the city add our concerns to a future agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anton.
Good evening. Roman Dylan Piero, citizen of Humboldt County. A cool thing about our oaths to the US Constitution is that it comes down to us, we the people, to know the difference between just laws or ordinances, statutes, et cetera, that align with our right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In contrast to so-called laws that impose tyranny, so discord, and disrespect, those so-called laws are not in harmony with the Constitution. We must reject them because they are thereby null and void. And it doesn't matter if a majority of voters or legislators or city council members pass such an unjust ordinance through a democratic process, and which, for that reason, I call your attention to Article 4, Section 4 of the USA Constitution. It says right there, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union a republican form of government." And please note there that it does not say the word "democracy." Democracy is two wolves and a lamb deciding what's for dinner. Among the many symbols of what I've attempted to say so far, probably not well, the Stars and Stripes American Flag is the most popular and recognized. Therefore, with all due respect, I request that you remove your endorsement of placing our flag in a place of dishonor. There is a respectful way to honor other flags by flying them at equal height to the Stars and Stripes and to the right, and it can also be upon the originator of that ballot initiative, if he wants to raise funds to have other flag pulls, to do so, and not on the Arcata taxpayers. Good evening again, and best wishes to y'all.
Thank you.
Can I give this back?
Good evening, council members and members of the community and whoever else is here. My name's Peggy Martinez. I am an Arcata resident and a business owner, and I'm here tonight on behalf of youth, students, visitors, seniors, non-drivers, workforce members, and others who would use a local transit system that is accessible, affordable, has 20-minute service frequency, operates nights and weekends, and goes places we want and need to go year-round. I also speak from my perspective as a longtime AM RTS rider. I've waited for buses in the rain at uncovered bus stops. I've walked countless miles because the schedule, because of the schedule in frequency and circuitous routing, or the schedule or routing changed without notice. I have missed evening meetings and other events because buses don't run past 7:00 PM during the summer. I've talked with riders who have tried using the bus. So I'm gonna set these pens here, and then I'll put them back up when I'm done with this, but I gotta use both my hands. Yeah, so anyway, they've tried using the bus, you know, like drivers, people who would normally drive, but they want to use the bus, and they've tried. But because the bus is, system is so unwieldy, people basically resort to their cars due to necessity. So the current system hasn't been usable by potential riders for many years, and the city has grown significantly, and new routing and destinations, I'm sorry, and new housing and destinations have come online with little or no bus services.
Sorry, Peggy, thank you. That is your, your two minutes, but we will have another time at the end of the meeting as well, if you want to continue your, your statement as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise. First, I'd like to apologize to David Loyah, Karen, and any members of the council and any other people. I'd like to apologize to David Loyah, Karen, and any members of the council and any other people. I get passionate about this. I know I do. And uh, we're all on the same team. We all want the same thing. I um, I recognize this occasionally and then I veer away from it occasionally. That's just the way I am. So I, I mean this sincerely. Uh, I, um, we're all trying to get this done. Thank you. The, what, where this came from, um, I re, I was thinking about, wha, wha, what are we really trying to do here? I um, I've told Karen and Meredith about this. Um, I have a, a friend from high school who has a successful uh, business. Um, and he's doing um, uh, he, he built 30,000 apartments, 30,000 apartment units. Now he's doing affordable housing. And he's made a model. Uh, uh, he's sharing it with me. It's for workforce housing, people that make $20 to $25 an hour. He's in Atlanta. Uh, it's um, I'll tell you more at a later time, you know? But um, it looks like it'll be financially successful. And it's uh, whether or not it can translate to Arcata, we'll find out. But that's, that's what I wanted to tell you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have any commenters online?
We do. Our first online caller is Rebecca. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rebecca Buckley Stein, and I am the managing attorney at the Eureka Office um, of Legal Services of Northern California. Legal Services of Northern California is a nonprofit legal services organization that provides no-cost legal services to low-income individuals. And I'm commenting tonight, hopefully at the right time, I'm not sure, um, about Agenda Item A, the, the Gateway Area Plan.
Rebecca, we are not there quite yet.
Okay.
So this is our, yeah, this is our early oral, this is for items not on the agenda, but uh, we'll go through our consent calendar and then that'll be the next item.
Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
All right. Call-in user one, go ahead. Go ahead, call-in user. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Nancy Pelletier. I just want to thank you, Mayor Schaefer and city council members for enabling Arcata House Partnership to open an extreme weather shelter for this um, very cold last win, last week and this week. Also to you city council members who showed up to volunteer at The Grove for the first night of the shelter. I also want to thank Darlene Spoor, Executive Director of Arcata House, and her wonderfully dedicated staff for the stellar work that they are doing to house and provide services for our ho, houseless. And I think that's about it. I just wanted to thank all of you. And we really, as a community, do appreciate it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Nancy.
There's no more online early communications.
All right. Anybody else in, in person? We have a few more minutes that we can take a couple more speakers. Yeah. Go ahead, Joanne.
Hi. Hello, my name is Joanne McWeary. I'm McWeary right now because there's so much need and so many people vulnerable in our community. And um, I walked here, as I often do, but I ran some errands beforehand. And one of the things I did on my way here was to walk by the new hour space on Ninth Street where um, the Playhouse Arts has set up a day, daytime opportunity for people to come in and be creative inside. And with the weather as it is, having an inside place is wonderful. I ran into a woman as I was there, sitting in front of the door. They were closed, but a friend of hers was inside doing some work and she was waiting. And I said, "Do you have a place to be tonight?" And she said, "No." And uh, I asked her what her name was, and she says, "I go by Nancy." Then of course, I thought of Nancy Barnes, who died in front of the doors of this building in December. And uh, then I tried to call the annex and um, there was no ride for her to go up and there was no guarantee that there was a place at The Grove because they were potentially already full. So I um, left her and said, "I'm gonna try and figure something out." I went into a store and acquired a sleeping bag and gave it to her. And um, hopefully she'll be warmer tonight. And this is not good enough, City Council. This is not good enough, City Manager. This is not good enough for our community to still have people in need of warmth and shelter. And the D Street Neighborhood Center needs to be opened.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. We have time for one more speaker, for our seven speakers. So take it away.
Um, I wanted to, just since I've lived in mid-rises and um, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of, you know, the history with them. It's, this is pretty new to Arcata. You're just looking at new buildings. But Miami has basically hundreds of them and they were built at all different times, but we'll just say 50s, 60s, and 70s, 80s. And the one that's been in the news is the one that collapsed in Surfside, which is right on the border of Surfside in Miami. And part of the reason they're saying that that collapse is because of sea level rise from basically the water intruding into the concrete and rebar. They had uh, structural engineers in the beginning that basically asked the, the residents to, you know, for a $3 million job to take care of the issues. And of course, you know, people don't have that kind of money. So got kicked down the, the road. Second uh, structural engineer came in, said $11 million. Um, they didn't quite make it. And so, you know, that building was a pretty much a shock to all of Florida for that, the collapse. So um, and it's not just that building. There's a lot of other buildings that have been red-tagged. That building was, by the way, in the 1980s too. So um, you know, there's a lot of problems with concrete buildings. And so, since we're putting it into a similar environment, a coastal environment, we need to know these concerns. And there's a lot of litigation from all the rest of the buildings because, you know, all these other buildings need to have work. Um, there's 30, 30-year certifications that are going on that are mandatory now. So a lot of structural engineers are looking at buildings. A lot of residents don't have the money to uh, basically come up and repair these buildings. So something to think about since if we go over four stories, we're talking about concrete in the city of Arcata. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And that will bring us to the end of early oral communications. Um, our next item on our agenda is going to be the Consent Calendar. All matters on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is required, that item can be removed from the Consent Calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the Consent Calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So, Item A, to approve the many, uh, approve the minutes of the City Council Meeting of February 7th, 2023. Item B, approve the minutes of the City Council Meeting of February 15th, 2023. C, bi-weekly report on dispersments. D, to adopt Ordinance Number 1564, an Ordinance of the City Council of the City Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code to Adada's Council Member Salary Title II Administration, Chapter One, Council, Section 2010, Salaries of the City Council Members, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Item E, adopt Ordinance Number 1552, an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adding Chapter Five Residential Rental Inspection Program to Title Eight Building Regulations of the Arcata Municipal Code, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. F, adopt Resolution Number 223-40, incorporating a list of projects for fiscal year 2023, 2024 to be funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Item number G, letter G, um, award a contract in the amount of $245,161 to GHD Incorporated for environmental compliance and monitoring for the Arcata Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase One Improvement Project and authorize the City Manager to increase the contract amount by up to $47,315, 20%, for a total of $292,476, and authorize the City Manager to execute all applicable documents. Item H, approve the appointment of Meredith Matthews to the board, position for the Humboldt Del Norte Hazardous Materials Response Joint Powers Authority, and Alex Stillman to the Homelessness and Housing Working Group for the remainder of the 2023 assignment year. And Item I, adopt Resolution Number 223-41, authorizing an application to Cal Home for a homebuyer assistance program in the amount of $490,286. So is there a council member that would like to remove any items from the Consent Calendar?
Yeah. Can I pull Item F, please?
Okay. F, Item F, any other items wanting to be polled or anything by staff or members of the public? Members of the public? D and G and H. Okay. So, that being said, unless there's anybody on Zoom wanting to pull an item from the Consent Calendar, we're gonna look through, for a motion for A, B, C, E, and I.
I would so move. A, B, C, E, and I.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Stillman, second by Vice Mayor Matthews. All in favor of approving those items. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. So that will take us to Item D, accept Ordinance Number 1564. Um, yeah. So, Joanne, please, yeah, speak, speak to your question or point on that one.
I'm sorry, is, is this the one about the salaries or the increase? Yes. I just like items that involve people on the dais and money and everything to be not consented and um, just run through and maybe explained. And it's, I'm not challenging anything. I would just like it to be explained.
Yeah. Thank you, Joanne. And this was, this is now, we did the first phase at our last meeting and this was discussed at our last meeting, an open session. Um, after every election, we can opt by the, the state's requirements to up our council salary by a designated amount. And so we talked about that at our last meeting and now it goes to consent to be um, brought in. So.
And the other thing is, I didn't bring my notes from that, but I talked about in, in the 1970s that the salary was $150 a month and how it's gone up, I can't remember because I don't have my note with me, up to what it is now and how many years that's taken for it to increase.
And I was not able to attend or see the complete meeting uh, of last time. So um, thank you for understanding why I'm asking this question. And again, I just kind of need it, in, in terms of that Sunshine Week we talked about, um, that transparency component is really nice to um, have. So thank you.
Yeah. Happy to answer the question. Is it clear? Did we, did we get it?
So I would move for adoption of Item D, adoption of Ordinance Number 1564.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman and a second by Councilmember Atkins Salazar for Item D. Is there any other public comment on Item D? On Zoom?
No, none online.
Um, all right. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor of Item D.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries unanimously. And then that will take us to Item F, which was also polled, um, I believe by uh, Vice Mayor Matthews. So we'll move to that one. Adopt Resolution Number 223-40, our list for SB 1-funded road repair and accountability.
Hi. So SB 1, is that um, specific pot of money for a specific kind of road projects? Or is it arbitrary? Or how do we decide what goes under SB 1?
Uh, it's not specifically. It's for any road maintenance project that we plan.
Okay. So it, this says that this is um, a portion of the projects? Are there more projects or could there be more projects, I guess?
Uh, so there is a limited amount of money that comes through SB 1. So we chose old Arcata Road project, but because that book, that project has been in the books for a long time and it's uh, recently we got a prize for the project. It's a bit underfunded. So we are trying to use any part of money we get to fund the project.
Sure. And that's super important, but um.
But yes, in your budget-setting session for next fiscal year, there will be the remainder list of roads projects that are funded through the city's portion and, and sometimes what's called a maintenance of effort portion uh, that we spend on local roads projects, which guarantees then our SB 1 funds. So that list um, will actually be in your box this week as we prep for goal-setting next week.
So there's other pots of money that road work can come out of? Just because um, to the last commenter, I went with Fred, who's the um, Chair of the Public Safety um, Committee. And we looked at that very road. My kids went to Arcata Elementary for a minute. So um, I do know specifically about that road. So yeah, if that's something that we could talk about during um, goal-setting, I'd love to, thanks. And then, I guess.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council on Item F? Or do we have any, uh, we'll take it out for public comment, if there's any public comments on Item F? All right. Well, then we will entertain a motion and a second.
All right. Well, then I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 223-40, incorporating a list of projects for fiscal year 23, 24 to be funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
I'll second. Stillman seconds.
Okay. So we have a motion by Vice, Vice Mayor Matthews, second by Councilmember Stillman, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to Item G, um, for environmental compliance and monitoring for the Arcata Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase One Improvement Project. Um, and I believe, yes, Joanne pulled that item. So ask your questions away.
Hi. Um, thank you for letting me um, pull this item because I think I've mentioned at past meetings, especially when the vote was made to spend such a huge amount, the most amount of money ever on the wastewater treatment plan for Phase One. My um, request at that time, is there anything that involves this project? I would like for it to not be on the Consent Calendar. I think it's really, really important for us as we go along with this project, Phase One, especially if we're going to start leaning into considering Phase Two, that we really discuss um, especially the financial component of this. And so my request to you is to talk again and explain why this additional monies are being spent. And um, please do not put this on the Consent Calendar, this issue. This, this is really important for the citizens here. The, the plant itself and the money we're spending on it and the future of our wastewater treatment facility is really important. So I would really request that this never be a consent um, item. So if you can explain a little bit about the extra money, I would really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. Um, Emily, if you want to explain a little bit just about um, yeah, why we're adding this extra contract and what that relates to. Thank you.
Great. So this contract is in relation to the Arcata Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase One Upgrade Project. This was um, planned to be needed. Um, we have many different aspects. We have the construction, construction management. And this component is because of Arcata's real commitment to protection of biological resources. So this um, is an environmental compliance and monitoring contract. Um, we put out an RFP and our goal is really to find expertise in both conducting pre-construction surveys, monitoring for construction that is happening in the sensitive areas that we've outlined and codified in our SEQA and our permits, and to really be able to um, make sure that all of our construction activities are following those permits and we have a number. Um, and um, this is a contract that will help us meet those goals and will have seamless coordination with city staff and our construction management as well and is um, within the um, project budget and the um, council's adopted fiscal year budget.
So.
Thank you, Emily.
Is it, what I would like to say, what it is, is doing rare plant survey and uh, they're doing a biological monitoring of the northern red-legged frog and also bird nesting surveys. So it happens to be all around environmental issues and, and natural habitat issues.
I applaud that. And I just would again like to ask, and maybe you can't respond at this moment, but this is such an important project for our community and it's such an expensive project that please do not put it on the Consent Calendar. Please. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on Item G? Either in person or on Zoom, public comment on Item G?
None online.
So I would move then to award the contract for Item G, uh, to award the contract of $245,162 to GHD for environmental compliance and monitoring of the Arcata. to GHD for environmental compliance and monitoring of the Arcata wastewater treatment facility Phase 1 improvement project. I probably didn't get the number quite right, but anyway.
61.
The numbers, I did say all the numbers.
Item G, we got item G, yeah.
16.
Okay, we have a motion from council member Stillman on item G.
I'll second.
And we have a second from Vice Mayor Matthews, all in favor for item G.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, okay, unanimous. And finally, that takes us to item H, about our little switch-up of a couple committees here.
Again, I am just wanting some transparency, sunshine and explanation about the change of committee things, so just if people can share that, thank you.
I'll be happy to share that, so Joanne, when I attend those meetings, when I signed up, it was under that it might change times, right now it's from 1:30 to 3, which is right in the middle of my workday, I have to use vacation time every time I go to that meeting, which I really can't afford to do, so Alex offered to switch.
Yeah, and I'm not challenging this, I just think it's important that people understand why the switch is being made, and you were on the housing, what's the committee that you were on and that Alex Stillman's going to be on now? What's it called?
Yeah, so the switch that's being made is that Meredith, who was formerly on the homelessness and housing working group, is going to switch with Alex for her appointment that was currently to the Humboldt Del Norte hazardous materials response.
Which is at like a 6:30 on a Monday, which is much more notable.
Totally understand the gathering and the need for time appropriate, so I just, like I say, this sunshine week thing, I'm so glad for this ceremonial matter, actually, that's putting sunshine on a lot of these issues, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. So is there any other public comment on consent calendar, item H?
There is none online.
All right.
I'll move for item H.
Okay, we have a motion for item H.
I will second that.
And we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and that takes us to the end of the consent calendar. Okay, so at this point, we are going to move into old business, which is to item A to receive an update on Gateway area plan engagement process, so we'll take a couple minutes here for our colleagues that are recusing themselves to get on out of here, and we will invite you guys back when, when we are done with this item, so we'll give you guys some, a couple minutes to get out of here, and then we will have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah.
All right, take it away, David.
Didn't think we'd ever get rid of them. Thank you, Mayor, council members and community, happy to bring back the update on the Gateway Plan, this was requested when we initiated the contract amendment for the Form Based Code to add some scope to it, to do a little bit more public outreach than we had planned, and then also a little bit more content in the code, we're able to bring on some architects to help with some of the graphics, and we'll get a little bit more there. So I've got a presentation for you tonight that I'll run through that looks back at what we've done, it looks at what's been going on more recently and kind of what the future holds. This image here is from the visioning that we did on the Gateway area plan or on the strategic infill redevelopment planning process, and so I just, this is one of these word clouds where when we were doing a survey with folks, you know, people got to, you know, put comments in about what they, what was important to them, that we needed to plan for, and, you know, so pretty even balanced across a number of different policy areas, I just wanted to start with that so that you could take a look at that again. So our outreach efforts to date, yes, I'm going to read the entire thing here. No, this is just to indicate what we've done to date, this is a list of the 26 events that we did before the release of the Gateway area plan leading up to the end of 2021, there were several outreach and engagements that happened then, since that time, the Form Based Code, I'm sorry, the Gateway area plan came out, we did work in January '22, 18 events, February 12, we kept going, we kept going and going, since the release of the document, we've done, and back, we've done more than 130 events, these are committee meetings, these are meetings with the Planning Commission, these are, you know, workshops, they were out in the community, we'll come to you sessions, walking tours, so that's the whole range of effort, I just wanted to start with that as a starting point. You know, I'm feeling like we're hopefully nearing the, the end of this process, the outreach and engagement associated with it, I know there's still a lot of work to do left, but I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on the work that my team has done to date. Ooh, that's in the wrong place. So, starting with the fall of, I'm, I'm sorry, I got thrown off a little bit, my slides got scrambled here, we had, this, this comes from a graphic that's on our outreach page, so for, for those who are interested to look at the full 2023 calendar and the general topics, they're listed along, you know, the, the bottom here, I've only got the first one shown here, what we did in the fall and winter of 2022, we were really in the thick of engagement with committees and the Planning Commission and other, you know, community groups, and the culmination of that, there was sort of a major milestone that happened in August with the Planning Commission City Council Study Session, and from that study session, you basically told the Planning Commission, look, tell us what you feel like you need to complete this gateway work, you know, we're hearing lots of, of, you know, issues being raised, we want to know what it is that you feel like you need to be able to make a recommendation to us. We spent November, September, November, going through a laundry list of items that were put on by planning commissioners, staff, things that we'd heard from the community previously, and the community members in real time during those meetings, and Council Member White was on the Planning Commission at the time, so she actually was able to participate in some of this work, and so she'll be familiar with this. As we went through each of those issues, you'll see the specific concern here listed, and I've only listed here the specific concerns that raised to the level where the Planning Commission wanted some follow-up. The Planning Commission discussed what kind of follow-up they wanted to see, we presented to them at the time, the range of resources that were already available to the Planning Commission, the city at, at that time, on each of these different topics, or items that we were thinking of doing in the near future, and, and then they established what, what they felt like they needed. The items that were related to their needs that we felt like were, you know, going to require an appropriation, new budget appropriation, we brought to your attention, those that we felt like we could cobble together, you know, without that, we've, we've just established a timeframe here, and so now, you know, I've, you know, got a list of those items that were raised to the top and the timeframes that they'll be brought, most of these are in regular sessions of the Planning Commission, some are in special study sessions, but, but you can see the list of ideas here, you know, everything from Form Based Code amendments, which we, we did approve, they wanted to hear about fire and police service, whether there were adequate staffing, they wanted to have more information on ownership opportunities, there was some discussion about lack of multimodal infrastructure, sea level rise, infrastructure impacts, accessibility, which was an issue, and I know that Peggy Martinez, who was here tonight and spoke earlier, is passionate about this issue as well, we've reached out to her and discussed with her and will reach out again on that issue, construction impacts, impacts on the Creamery District and the building itself, effects on business, height and shading views, height and shading and views, rather, fiscal impacts, questions about gentrification and housing affordability, and then concerns about tsunami and storm surge, so those were the topics that raised to the top, we are bringing those through each of the Planning Commission meetings through May, I can go into more detail of each of these if you're interested, but that's the laundry list. Okay, so the Form Based Code, and we're going to get into this in a little bit more detail in just a moment, but that was approved by your body on the 4th of January of this year, and we've been making good progress on that. I also want to note that this outline detailed, just for those who are sharp out there and catch these little details, that we were to bring the ownership opportunities to the Planning Commission for, to have a subcommittee formed if they wanted to do that at their last meeting, they ran out of time, so we didn't bring this up. And then I also wanted to, again, emphasize that we plan to get this work done by the end of May, referencing back to the discussion on the 4th of January when, you know, we heard from the, the council that you wanted to see this work done and, and start seeing drafts within six months. So the 2023 calendar, moving into the spring of '23, the idea there was that we were going to start finalizing review of the general plan updates, be making progress through the Gateway area plan and so on and so forth, starting in on the environmental documents. So the Form Based Code amendments that you approved, we've kicked off, we've had a first series of public workshop that was based on or focused on design, massing in open space, that happened on the 19th of January, and then the Planning Commission followed up with a four-hour work session after that on the 11th of February, covering the same topics, with the benefit of being informed by both that workshop and a follow-up survey that was open for a time after the workshop. Our second workshop with the public was held just the other week on February 23rd, and the Planning Commission is going to take another four-hour session on Saturday on March 18th to go over that material, again, we've got a survey that's open right now that people can, can take a look at the recording of the public workshop, and then they can interact with the survey material, tell us what they think, the Planning Commission will have the benefit of that information before they have their discussion on the 18th. And then the third schedule, if you recall, there were three workshops scheduled in the Form Based Code amendment that you adopted on the 4th, is intended to go over uses, the community benefits program and permitting, permitting has been something that people have been very concerned with, you know, we've been talking about having ministerial permitting for projects that are consistent with the Form Based Code, and so we'll go into, you know, detail around that and have a, a community discussion on what the appropriate permitting level should be, reflecting on the, again, the state laws that are kind of pushing us in this direction, whether we like to go there or not. And then the scope has the Form Based Code draft based on the input that we received through these three workshops and other work that we're doing at the Planning Commission level, to be done by June of 2023. Our consultant has committed to making this timeline, our consultant heard loud and clear, again, the council's desire to have this done in six months, and we're working to meet those expectations. Moving on to the general plan updates, there are several elements within the general plan, we have all of the mandatory elements that are required by state law, and we also have several elective elements, I guess you could call them, that we're reviewing over the course of the last year and into this year. We've conducted review on all of the elements, at least one review at the Planning Commission, some have several reviews at various committee levels, and we'll be weaving those all together and trying to bring all of that review material, again, by the end of, you know, June, to, to try and meet that six-month timeline. What the Planning Commission has on its docket for the rest of that period through February, March and April, is to finish up the land use element and growth management element, and to look at the circulation element, starting March 14, and then lastly, we'll be looking at the health, historic, design and infrastructure elements, starting on April 25th. Excuse me, many of these elements have very light polishing, they're not major revisions, and so, you know, we, we anticipate this timeframe for their review to be adequate, and, you know, we're still working through some of the committee levels with some of these as well. Sorry, moving into the summer is when we'll begin the, the environmental work, we anticipate that the draft EIR, now the EIR process, the environmental review report process is a lengthy process, there's some public disclosure, there are timelines that allow the public and agencies to respond, we take all of that information and all of the comments that we've received, and we have to, you know, think critically about how to respond to those, does it mean a change to the EIR, is it handled in the EIR, does it, you know, reflect an environmental concern at all? We go through and do all that assessment and then we produce what's called a final EIR. The final EIR doesn't replace the draft EIR, it's a part of completing the environmental work, so we'll have a draft EIR that's produced in July, we anticipate the final EIR to be completed by around February of '23, and we're hoping that this, that you'll be able to start reviewing in 24, 24, cut and paste. Well, actually, it's done, yeah, we're done. We'll have it to you yesterday. 24, excuse me, and then to adopt the EIR in March of 2024 as well. After you've adopted the EIR, then you could start adopting all of these plans, the Form Based Codes and whatnot. I do want to emphasize that while we have this six-month timeframe for all of these documents, what, what that draft stage by June will allow us to do is start circulating this EIR, we'll have a stable enough project description at that point to be able to, to release the draft EIR, we'll still be able to, you know, look as a community, as, as the council, as the Planning Commission and committees, at these documents and see are there, you know, still tweaks that we need to make. If we find critical tweaks that we need to make, then we can discuss how to, how to evaluate, you know, steps forward after that. My, what I suspect is that all of the, the issues that are related to environmental impact will be on the table already. When we get closer to time to start looking at this draft EIR, I'll go into more technical detail with you and explain a little bit more what the options are, but in general, what, what the approach should be when we enter the EIR is to evaluate the most impactful project description that we think we might adopt, we can downscale from there. So a good example would be Gateway area plan was originally released with recommendations for the four districts, scaling back from eight stories down to five stories, so eight, seven, six and five in the various districts, the Planning Commission is currently working on, and I believe they will likely make a recommendation of the City Council to adopt a 7, 6, 5, 4 rubric, so, so dropping down one. The EIR can still evaluate that larger project description, and the council can still adopt a lower project description when all is said and done, and there's, you know, there's no harm, no foul. So again, more detail on what those differences will be as we get closer to it, but we think that we'll be able to complete these, you know, by end of year, and we'll be into public hearings in March of 2024. And so just the high-level milestones through 2023 and into 2024, you know, again, by, by the end of June, we're looking at having the Form Based Code drafted, the general plan updates drafted, and whatever revisions to the Gateway Plan, we currently have one major revision to date, if there are any others, we'll be, have that completed by June 30th as well. We hope to have the draft EIR released by July 31st, that'll start our clock for public engagement on that, and then by, again, March 30th, 2024, we'll be ready to start considering adoption of these plans. So those are the major milestones, and I do, you know, if possible, want to get feedback on, you know, on, on the work that we're doing and, you know, in these timelines, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I wanted to, I guess, in addition to the list of the outreach events that you highlighted, while these aren't events, I wanted to say there was some really good community outreach, some great articles in the Mad River Union and the Time Standard as well as the Lost Coast outpost about some of the upcoming events that the community can participate in, so that was really awesome, I apologized to everyone for having to miss the committee session, I was ill, good news is that somebody in the community did record that, so if anybody else wants to access that, I believe it's on arcataone.com, it's great. I did have some concerns with the long-range planning effort, study session recordings on that note, and I feel like the recordings for the SERP study sessions are needed and desired by the community, and council members have been asked explicitly not to attend, and so I feel like I'm missing out, so if we could somehow facilitate having these future opportunities recorded, I know we've got one coming up on March 18. we've got one coming up on March 18th, which is the Form-Based Code Study Session, and then we have another one on March 28th, the Sea Level Rise Study, and also one this weekend. And then also a tentative one scheduled in April 22nd, which is the Form-Based Code Study Session Number Three. I'm hoping that maybe the council could consider reimbursing the community members for the costs that have been spent already on February 11th for the Form-Based Code Study Session. And I would like to see if we could house all these recordings related to the SERP long-range planning efforts to the city SERP webpage YouTube channel, if possible. Yeah, so I know when we were looking through some of the things that the Planning Commission had highlighted that they wanted to see more, I did see a mention of the Creamery District there. I guess I was wanting to see if we could get an update back in November 22nd, as you mentioned, the Planning Commission meeting. The commissioners agreed to invite ourselves to the Playhouse or somewhere in the Creamery District for a study session with the Gateway residents and artists community to discuss impacts on the community, Creamery District building, Form-Based Codes with an emphasis on the Creamery District, resident and business relocation assistance, an artist live workspace, effects on businesses, et cetera. So I just wanted to check on the status of this. There really hasn't been any public discussion or update regarding this directive, and if I've missed it, I apologize. Some potential solution would be that you could give an update to the PC, Planning Commission, sorry, and if the Planning Commission would consider inviting the City Council, I personally would attend this study session. So I think that if we do move forward on that, I would recommend that we do it as soon as possible, and that we would advertise it robustly so that everyone can get involved. And then just a couple more things, and then I'll pass it to my fellow council folks. The results on survey number one, it just seemed to be a list of general comments. I'm just wanting to know if there's going to be a summary or an analysis provided for any of these surveys, in particular that one. It was just pages and pages, and I'm shuffling through and wanting to make some charts and bar graphs and, you know, pie charts to kind of make some sense of it, but that's not my forte. So hoping that somebody might be able to decipher that so that it's meaningful. And a couple more things. Is there any plans to specifically include the Latinx community in this part of the engagement process? I know that we've done one, but as you pointed out, five people showed up, but only one was actually a Spanish speaker. So I'm hoping that we might be able to do a little bit more engagement in that particular arena. And I think that's it. Thank you.
I'll add to your last point, Kimberly, and maybe Karen or David collaborate more, but Equity Arcade has been specifically reached out to and invited to, you know, reach out to their community and bring in their equity partners to give formal comment on the draft plan. So I know that the ongoing learning team is in the process of making that happen and, you know, making those connections, so that's great. And I think that they're, you know, will be engaging multiple diverse, you know, including the Latinx community on the topic, so.
Yeah, I would add in addition to that, we have a contract with Sharon and Meredith, drawing a blank on the name of their company right now, but they, and they are, basically they created a company that was specifically designed to outreach to, you know, under outreach folks, people of color, folks who are marginalized traditionally, and, you know, under resourced communities. And the point of that contract that we have with them is to make sure that we have a, you know, stakeholder group that is, you know, specifically brought together to really look closely at equity issues. And so they're also involved in, you know, providing some input on that. We have found with the, you know, with our engagements to date, trying to hold a, you know, Spanish-language meeting in the same format that, you know, we've held, you know, other workshops in English, that they are not producing the same kinds of results that we're getting with these specifically targeted outreach stakeholder groups that are brought together by, you know, by trusted community members. You know, I'll just be blunt, and when I come forward and say, you know, I'm from the government and I'm here to help, I'd like to speak to you in Spanish, but I can't speak it, you know, it has a completely different impact than having, you know, a trusted network of folks coming out and doing that engagement. So we're, we've pivoted and we're working more along that ladder lines as opposed to holding more meetings. But again, we can, we can talk with the council if you want to about, you know, appropriating additional funds for additional outreach specifically targeted to Spanish speakers.
Is that something that we could address now, or will that be like later? If there is any interest with council, I would love to have that agendized or for discussion.
I mean...
Well, I just want to add to, or just at least ask, because I thought it was, at our last Equity Arcade team meeting, they shared that document that that outside group put together that kind of looked at the Gateway Plan and the engagement that had already been done, like, through the equity lens, and it was really eye-opening and interesting to kind of see the additional comments that folks from those communities had about the Gateway Plan. And I don't know if that's something that had been shared with council previously, or if that's something that could be shared with council. I thought it was really interesting to read and look at, so if that's possible to share with my colleagues here, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. That would be wonderful, and I'm wondering if we might make that available to the public, because it might garner some more momentum so that other voices want to, you know, also tap in there and give their opinions as well.
Yep. This is a body of work that's just in draft form, and they were doing some stakeholder outreach just to get some initial feedback before they finalized a version that we will be sharing widely with the public and getting feedback. In addition to that, they've brought on Equity Arcade to, I'd say, increase that network capacity, to look at issues that have been identified through their work, and how to build some policy recommendations around that. I do trust that that will have some targeted outreach to the Latinx community through some of the names that I've heard they're starting to gather around that work. But I, but it would not be, again, like a specific Form-Based Code workshop just in Spanish. It really is going to be around broader policy.
So I'm just wondering, I mean, if we don't use it, it's a good problem to have, but that we might have even a small budget that if it does turn out that they would need some money to pursue that, that they wouldn't have to come back and ask for it and slow the process down. I know everyone is really anxious to get the ball rolling, but we don't want to leave out these voices, so is that a discussion, or can we agendize that?
I would say it's a discussion you should try to have tonight, at least in concept, and then if there is a budget adjustment, we would bring back, or a dollar amount that you were comfortable setting aside, we would just bring that back as a, you know, consent calendar item at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you done?
Yeah, do you have more questions, or did, I don't think David answered everything, but...
Yeah, and that, depending on what body of work that is, it could be a full council, or it could be just something specific to Gateway.
And just, I don't know, I think right now, at this point, at least for me, I'm looking forward to seeing the work that Equity Arcade is going to do and who they're going to bring into their network, and I think it would be, at this point, I mean, they're doing the work to reach out to these communities, and I think it would be a little presumptive at this point to want to just throw more money at the, at the wall. I mean, I think that they're pretty committed to wanting to do this work and bring in a lot of partners and kind of, you know, workshop that, and so I'd be interested to kind of see the next steps of what Equity Arcade is doing before we just, you know, throw more money to do, you know, Form-Based Code workshops and things that we've done in Spanish as well, because as we saw before, that the previous sessions weren't very well attended, especially when the city had put them on, and I think that having these other equity groups be able to work to make these policy recommendations is going to be the most valuable.
That works for me. Do you, because this is the first that I heard that there was even engagement happening on this, so I'm really excited to hear that.
I was going to report it out tonight in my council reports at the end, because I just had that meeting last week, but, yeah.
So I was going to just ask the timeline, so you answered that. Thank you, I'm excited. Bye.
All right. So, hi. I know that we asked for a midpoint review from when we granted that extra $118,000 from our reserves, and so I'm thankful that it's here right now. I know that I have a lot of questions, I'm sure Sarah does too. If I get too off the subject and not, and, you know, I don't want to get too far away from what we're doing right now, which is like a midpoint review of where the outreach has gone and what we're going to do with the rest of that money moving forward, so.
I'm going to ask a few questions, so I don't take up the whole time, we'll just go back and forth if that's true.
All right, so let's talk about the outreach events, Director Lawyer. So we've had...
So we're on the, we've had two workshops with the public on this current round. This is actually the fifth workshop with the public, but the second in this series with the revised scope.
So of that $118,000, how much of that, I mean, are we keeping track of how much money everything is, and how much have we gone through?
We absolutely are. I couldn't tell you what the current balance is, but we're about the, you know, the, you know, we're about a third of the way through the actual physical work that needs to be done to, you know, to get done with that body of work.
Okay, because...
Do you think, sorry, just add, so are we on budget for that?
Yes, we're totally on budget.
So, and how many people are attending these meetings?
We have had, you know, sometimes people come in and drop out, so, but we've had, you know, between, I think, one meeting we had 17, I think the last meeting we had maybe 20, 21 attending.
Okay, so from where I'm at, I do feel like, you know, we've done a lot of outreach, and I want people to know that just because there's not formal meetings doesn't mean that their voices aren't being heard, doesn't mean that we're not getting emails and phone calls and public comment, and that those things, those public opinions can come in concurrently with some of the work we're doing. I think that at this point, it would be more beneficial for people to see some actual code and to really have an idea to wrap their head around on what we're actually doing. So I guess what I'm asking is, I know we have Ben Noble, and I know he's committed to this July date, but is it possi, I just feel like we're putting carts before horses as far as like having discussions on Form-Based Code when it's kind of this esoteric idea that people don't, can't really wrap their head around. I'd rather, like, have some examples of specific Form-Based Code that fit this area, and then maybe after that, you know, have another meeting to get input. So is that something that's possible?
Yeah, absolutely. The first two workshops were really around, you know, the design elements of the Form-Based Code, and we've collected that information, that data. The last session is intended to go over, you know, the permitting process, the Community of Benefits Program, and then uses. And I think that those, you know, you know, have less to do with the, you know, with the design elements. So in some ways, you know, you could say, look, we've got the information that we need to, you know, to build out a draft code. We were never going to do a full charrette where we went and, you know, looked at, you know, sites, specific standards, and, you know, played around with different concepts and ideas, we just don't have the resources to do that. And so what the intent was with this, you know, public engagement was to get input from folks, the kinds of things that, you know, generally that they liked, and then we would add those into a code, then we'd have a draft code to reflect on. That draft code is intended to be produced by, again, by June. And so I do think it's reasonable, you know, if the council would like to shift gears on the, you know, on the scope, and instead of, you know, conducting additional workshops, redirect and have the, you know, have the code developed. I feel like for those other issues, we have lots of information based on, you know, the 130-plus, you know, events that we've done to inform those aspects of this code, and then we can bring that forward.
I'm sorry. Well, I'm glad you...
No, I was just going to say, I do, something that I've been hearing from a lot of people is that, that kind of same concept is that, you know, it's interesting to learn about this Form-Based Code and how that works, but it's also a little intangible to not, you know, see what a draft code looks like at this point, too, with those engagements. But the education aspect, I do think, is incredibly important. That being said, I mean, if we're talking this, this shift gears, because I'm looking at the, I wrote them down here, the dates that you had up previously, I mean, there's probably, I imagine Ben Noble's a very busy, busy man, and that, you know, to get a draft before June wouldn't be realistic, or do you think it would be realistic? How does that sit in your mind?
Yeah, I'll have to confer with him to see if he can speed that timeline up. I know that he was waiting to, you know, to work on the code before, until he got, you know, some direction from the, some indication from the Planning Commission, because we don't want to redo work. I will, because I have to, I feel like it's my duty to point out that this is, herein lies the rub, this is exactly the conundrum. When you come to the community and you don't have a draft, then it feels hard to wrap your brain around it. It feels hard to understand, like, what am I doing here? What's the purpose of this? When you come to the community and you have a draft, they say, why didn't you ask me first? I just want you to be aware of that.
So can, then the question that I have is, within the scope of planning that we have and this money that we set aside, is there a plan to then have, you know, at least one plus, you know, final engagement meetings after that draft code is out, and then people actually have something to look at and see what those buildings look like and see what those setbacks might be, and to actually, you know, see how it's going to affect their neighborhoods or their shopping districts, or, you know, wherever they're out and about?
Yeah, absolutely. And this kind of goes back to the point that I was making about the, you know, the next six-month period while we're going through the environmental work, there's still time to have community dialogue around, you know, the Form-Based Code, around the Gateway Area Plan, the elements, and continue to modify those. It's not an environmental impact to say we want a 10-foot setback, or we want a 5-foot setback, or we want a 15-foot setback, generally speaking. And so if we go into the Form-Based Code and we say, look, this is the basis of, you know, the environmental analysis, and then we wind up changing our mind, it's either not going to have an environmental impact and it doesn't upset our timeline, you know, or if it does, if it will upset the timeline, then, you know, again, like I said earlier, we can talk about that. But yeah, absolutely, there's still time to refine. The work that we're doing right now is to produce good drafts that will then have probably several more meetings, maybe even 130, hope not, but several more meetings to, you know, to review and analyze and make decisions based on.
I have a bit more, well, actually, I have a housekeeping question. Will this presentation, can we have this presentation be available to ourselves and the public, just for that timeline of dates and just...
Yeah, absolutely. We're putting everything on the SERP webpage, we'll send you out the link.
Great. And then my other more, just kind of general question, how, because you did refer to the general plan a couple times in this as well, and so how is that process linking up with this? And then are they, they're obviously being approved separately, and then does the general plan require any EIR in those updates that we're making? And how does that timeline link with the Gateway timeline? Do they need to happen at the same time? Do they happen separately? What does that look like?
Yeah, great question. So the reason why we came up with this term SERP, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program, is because we have a lot of moving parts that are all interrelated. The Gateway Area Plan is actually an element, a separate element of the general plan. It's an area plan, so, you know, we talk of it as if it's separate, because, you know, it's like a mini general plan within the general plan, but it's actually a component of the general plan. And so as we do the updates to the rest of the general plan elements, and as we develop the new element, the Gateway Area Plan, that will be embedded in that, that body of work... the new element, the Gateway Area Plan, that will be embedded in that, that body of work, and the associated form-based code, we'll then do the environmental analysis on all of that. The environmental analysis will cover the general plan, updates, the Gateway Area Plan, and the form-based code. You can't take final action on any of those documents until you complete the environmental review, and that's why I listed that out as a separate milestone, sub-milestone.
All right, I've got a couple more quick questions. One of them, I think, might be outside of the scope of this, so if it is, just tell me and we can table it. But because of the building heights that people are talking about, you know, 7, 6, 5, 4, so it's my understanding that the Gateway Area is already zoned for four stories, right? So where do, like, form-based codes and community amenities and whatnot fit into that? If you can already build a four-story building, then how are we going to be able to work in, you know, some of the things that we want to see, or are we not going to be able to? And does that even have to do with what we're talking about now?
If I understand your question correctly, the new, you know, whatever is new, basically what's approved now and what the current environmental condition is considered like the baseline, what we add to it through this process will replace those other codes. And so the code that says right now you can build a four-story building, that will be, that'll go away, and it'll be replaced with the new Gateway Code, whatever that happens to say.
So we can say, you know, if you want to build a four-story building, you have to have this and this and this and this. That's fantastic.
Yeah.
All right. So then, the EIR. So that will take into consideration all of this liquefaction and soil studies, and that, that will all come out in the EIR and, and then we go back and fix that, correct?
Yeah. This is kind of a nuanced question that you've asked. The EIR will consider all subject areas that fall under CEQA. Liquification and, and, you know, various geologic concerns, you know, fall under CEQA. The, you know, service provision falls under CEQA. But that gets into, again, another set of nuances because it's, you know, for example, a question about, well, does, does, you know, does a service provider, you know, need to do something to, to provide additional service? Is that going to create an environmental impact? Do they have to build a new building? Do they have to, you know, fill a wetland, that sort of thing? That's what CEQA wants to evaluate. There are other issues that are going on that are outside of CEQA that, you know, we're also going to need to evaluate, you know, you know. We want to have an understanding of, you know, financial, you know, cost implications and, you know, how we would develop, you know, you know, the, the means to improve infrastructure to support future, you know, populations and that sort of thing. That's all outside of CEQA. So there's a lot of discussions that we're having in the community that have really nothing to do with CEQA. We're still going to evaluate many of those concepts and, and provide, you know, information to the decision-makers. But, but overall, the, the environmental analysis will, it's intended to get down to a level of detail so that most projects can be ministerially permitted. And so what I mean by that is, you know, right now, you know, our code allows for several different kinds of ministerial activities. If you're in the commercial central and you want to open up a retail store, you don't have to get a, a permit to do that, a planning permit to do that, you just go and, you know, if there's a building permit required, you just open. It's an allowed use. Because it's an allowed use, there's no CEQA associated with it. When uses become discretionary, when you have to go get a, a permit from the Planning Commission of the City Council, and the Planning Commissioner, City Council has to weigh whether or not they can make findings to approve your project, then it is subject to CEQA. One of the, you know, sort of cornerstones of the work that we're doing here, that, you know, prior councils put us on the path for, was to create a streamlined pathway for, you know, development of many types, to meet the, the community's needs within these infill areas. Reserve discretion for, you know, types of uses that you don't want to see in your community, ensure that the developments are being built in a way that, you know, they, they look compatible, that you feel like they look compatible with the community, that they, they reflect our, our aesthetic. But then remove the constraints to permitting those projects so that they can put money into the project, so they can put money into community amenities, so that they can put money back into the community as opposed to putting money into a planning process. So the way to do that is to make those projects ministerial as well. So our environmental analysis is intended to go to a deep enough level so that we can have ministerial projects throughout the plan area, recognizing that certain elements like, you know, if there's hazardous materials on the site, you know, there were a former lumber mill, and there may be, you know, dioxins or something like that, we're not evaluating to that level of detail. If there's a wetland on the site, we're not evaluating to that level of detail, trying to give a broad brush stroke and say, we think there might be wetlands here. And so this property would have to come in and do some analysis in order to move through to, to development. So I hope that wasn't too much, but you asked a very nuanced question that I couldn't just say yes or no to.
No, that's great. So when do we get, like, are committees ready to make recommendations? What's the, what is that process? They bring their recommendations to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission brings them to us? Is that, is that how that works?
That's exactly how that works, and what we've been doing, because there's, you know, recommendations are, you know, coming in from, you know, the public, they're coming from committees, they're, you know, coming from the, the Planning Commission. What we've been doing is when we hear recommendations that, you know, are consistent with the, you know, the broader body of work that we've produced, you know, whether it's, you know, a minor update to the general plan or a new general plan element, you know, that staff has pulled together, you know, information and, you know, from the community, and we put these, these documents together. When these recommending bodies say, you know, hey, will you make this change? And it comports with that, then we're doing it and track changes in the document. When they make a recommendation for a change that completely runs counter to the, you know, the flow, the policy flow of the rest of the document, we're housing that separately. And instead of losing that in the shuffle, we're pulling that together in, you know, an ongoing list, so that the decision-makers, the Planning Commission first, will be able to look at that list and evaluate, well, I see you didn't put this recommendation in because you said it wasn't consistent with the plan, but, you know, we think you should put it in. So then, you know, ultimately, the Planning Commission, the City Council will be able to see those lists and evaluate recommendations that weren't included, along with recommendations that were included.
Perfect. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we saw that. All right, one more question, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I just want to put it out there that I really do thank the Planning Commission because they've been putting in a lot of extra time, doing a lot of extra work, and trying to wrap around their heads around these things. So I appreciate that. I know that, you know, we granted them this money, and I just want to say that I would just leave it open for if they felt like they needed anything else, if they wanted to have someone talk to them about liquefaction or solar shading or whatnot, that they, A, not be afraid to ask us, but B, try to ask us soon, so we can get that into time.
Yeah, no, I think that this list does it. You know, they went through and worked on this in a, a series of workshops, and I think these are the issues, and they've identified the ways that they want to resolve these issues. You know, the, you know, sea level rise was, you know, has been a consistent theme, you know, that we want to, you know, make sure that we're doing right by our community for the future projections for sea level rise. And as you're well aware, for March 28th, we've scheduled a study session between the City Council and the Planning Commission, I believe that's on future agenda items tonight. And at that study session, we'll be bringing representatives from NOAA, California Coastal Commission, and a couple of locals who know Humboldt Bay to, to basically have a panel discussion on sea level rise, so that you, decision-makers, the public, can hear it for themselves from experts in the field. And so, you know, the, these are the topics, these are the items that they said they needed more information on, and I have consistently reminded them, you know, as things come up in conversation, if you want to do that, we don't have scope for it, you would need to make a recommendation. So they're, they're well aware and we're constantly having that conversation.
All right, I'm done, thank you.
Could I ask a really quick question with regards to the upcoming sea level study session? You mentioned, and I think my brain's taking a timeout, you said NOAA and who else?
California Coastal Commission.
Uh-huh.
And then a couple of local...
Do we know who those locals, and is that already slated, or?
Yeah, I've invited Alderon Laird, he's accepted, he's done the modeling for the Bay, and so he's an engineer who's an expert in the region. I know many people have also, you know, brought up Alderon Laird.
Jeff, is Jeff coming?
I'm sorry, I said Alderon Laird. Jeff Anderson.
Great.
Is the engineer, thank you for that correction, who's done the modeling in the, the region. He's accepted. Alderon Laird has also been invited, and he's, he's asked for more information, we're kind of going back and forth, he hasn't committed yet, and I'm hopeful that he'll be willing to come and talk as well, because I know many people hold him up as a, a regional expert. Alderon's a planner who's done a lot of the vulnerability assessments in the region.
Great. And as I said, I think that my brain might have taken a timeout. Could you, just one more time, pardon me, we talked about something being ministerial permitted, but there would be some reserved discretionary opportunities, and you were discussing, say, for example, you know, making sure that the flavor or the character of the, the buildings are consistent with each other. I'm, if, I, I mean, I've been told it has to be one or the other, but it feels like it doesn't have to be, that you can do both? And so it sounds like that's what you were alluding to?
The, the way that the draft has been released to the community calls for ministerial review of projects that are consistent with the form-based code. The form-based code is the document that would be used to ensure that new buildings are consistent with the design ethics, aesthetics that we have in the community. Certainly, you know, the council that directed us to head down this path is not the council that's going to be adopting it, and it's to your discretion whether you maintain those ministerial pathways or not, and to what degree. To the degree you do not retain ministerial pathways, the form-based code gives us some control over projects that will come in and use the myriad state laws that exempt those projects from discretionary local review. There, there's a long history of the city not meeting its housing objectives, there's a long history of a housing crisis that has only intensified, and there are signals and signs everywhere around us every day that are intensifying, that suggest that getting out of the way of developers who are going to provide for us the kinds of things that we've stated in advance through a form-based code that we want to see in our community is the right thing to do. And so that's the staff recommendation. There are many ways that you can have a minister review that still provides, you know, public notice, and you could even have it at a, a public hearing. It, it sort of begs the question, the purpose for it, it's a little bit, I'll be frank, some theatrics, to have a Planning Commission issue a ministerial permit. I think providing the public notice of these projects when they're coming in so that regardless of who the body is that's making the decision as to whether or not the project does or does not meet that form-based code requirement, can evaluate that for themselves. And, you know, recognizing that there are going to be differences of opinions, it allows for those, those individuals who disagree that a project has met form-based code to have an appeal option.
Okay. I think we've talked a lot, and I think we've asked a lot of questions, and I think now it is going to be the public's time to talk. So we are going to open this item up for public comment, so if anybody has a public comment about the engagement process of the Gateway Area Plan, this is about the engagement. So, three minutes, and we are going to take in-person public comment first, so if you are here in person and you would like to comment on the Gateway Area Plan engagement process, please line up by the, behind the podium, and also if you're on Zoom, you could raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And so we will take in-person public comment on the Gateway Area Plan engagement process. Three minutes, please begin.
Gregory Daggett. I'm not confident in the EIR that the city's going to do the appropriate thing there because, number one, there's a few studies that need to be done, which are very important, the noise, traffic, and air. And I've already addressed the noise aspect for the last year to the City Council and the City Manager, I've written letters, and basically there's no response there. There was a response from the City Council a year ago, basically just saying, you know, we don't have the money, sorry. So that's a sign right there, if you can't take care of the problem at the population that we're at, how are you ever going to address it when we have a lot more people? And so I'm kind of shocked that there's been no attempt to resolve that. The other indication that there's a problem there is, and just look at what happened with the fire department from the standpoint, you know, we had them clearly say that we don't want to go over three stories, but the other aspect of that is, I was probably one of the few people that wrote the trustees at Cal State, and they, it was basically attorney that was writing back, and the attorney was, you know, outlining not significant, and that's a pretty important word, not significant, and in EIR, EIR, saying that you, you know, basically they don't have any fire departments going to take care of their problem, but it's not significant, that's very, very unusual. And that's also what was used in the Berkeley versus Berkeley case, where the university used that, and then the California courts were pretty pissed off about that, that using not significant was used over and over as far as noise, traffic, environmental concerns. And, I mean, we're basically, you know, the, the university had the top attorneys in, in the state, and they lost like two or three times, they kept on repealing it. So it's, that can't happen here in the city because, you know, we're not the university, so they can't get away with that quite, but I'm just like, I mean, I've, I've called Plan West and asked them about this, and it's basically a little squirrely in the answers, it's just kind of like not taking it seriously, not telling you the details are really what's going to happen. So, I mean, it's been a whole year that I've asked questions and written submitted comments, and not, nothing has ever been answered. So that's why I don't have a lot of confidence in it from that standpoint. I'd also say, just the process with submitted letters, it's very undemocratic because you'll, you submit a letter and, you know, it might get posted in a month or three months, and, you know, with even the Planning Commission, they can submit a letter and it instantly goes on the agenda, and so you have no control, you have no rights. I mean, I appreciate that we have somebody who's taking notes right now, because that will be recorded. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Peggy Martinez here. I am so glad I was here tonight to hear this, and I came for this reason. I have a few items to mention about engagement. I, I would really like to see the city do more outreach with folks with disabilities. I did do one session with a city staffer, and it was great, and we did try to get more people to attend, and it could very well be that, you know, connecting with Equity Arcata would be good for me to do, but I do think that there needs to be some stakeholder input from, you know, wheelchair users and others who might have some opinions about, you know, upcoming housing. I also want to say that I, I am totally supportive of the idea for the Gateway Plan, and I'm really excited about it. Wanted to say that. The other thing I want to say is that I haven't really heard anything about any kind of transportation study session. I think all the other items to discuss are important, and I have not been to Planning Commission meetings for various reasons, but I think that we need to study, it's, it's very great, and, you know, I am thrilled with the idea that people are intended to walk and, you know, and, and ride bikes and whatnot. I'm a total fan of that. But people are going to need to get to a lot of places around, not only the town of Arcata or the city of Arcata, but everywhere else, and I have, I'm just really concerned that we are not investing in... we are not investing in, we're not considering the transportation element regarding, you know, public transit specifically, how people are going to actually get around if they're, you know, theoretically not supposed to have a car. So I am available to discuss this at any point with anyone. So, and I think you all know that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Hi, James Becker. And just took some notes and appreciate all the conversation. It's actually really good as this moves forward and we're learning more about everything. So I think the present Form Based Codes workshops have been really meaningful. I mean, I've been learning a lot, looking forward to some discussion on the heights and the shading views. You know, and the following surveys, you know, they definitely have been a meaningful chance for input. You know, I've definitely learned the nuts and bolts as far as, you know, the community being able to be involved in. And I've even encouraged on Facebook for more people to, you know, get involved in as far as, you know, as they're discussing things about parking and putting their input. You know, I applaud council member White for, you know, talking about the engagement at the Curamere District. And I think even if the planning commission has, you know, turned the corner on that, I think it would be awesome to just have the city council there. There's a lot that's been learned in this engagement. I think you could present and I think you could, you know, it'd be a great time for clarification. I know a lot of volleys are still flying around, but I think a lot could be learned from it. And so I think it'd be valuable and really positive. And then council member Matthews, the request to review some of the specific Form Based Codes and the relevant to real-time situations. I think that's good too because it's the first chance for people to look at this and, you know, put their input. They may or may not completely understand it, but it gives them something to chew on. And I think that's, as we engage in this process, that's been the real positive thing of the whole thing. And then specifically to, you know, some recent experiences, as far as the privately owned public spaces, I think if the park and lufies are necessary because the privately owned public spaces are not possible on some of these buildings, I think they should stay within the gateway because it'd be helpful for the parks there. You know, I mean, just say at the Linear Park, I think it'd be a great place. Some of that money could be applied if we could, if that's something that could be agreed upon. And then I'd request that the privately owned public spaces be applied to four-story buildings under 30,000 square feet instead of starting at five-story buildings above 30,000 square feet. Because there would be a lot of people and from what I've understood from some discussion at the meetings, there may not be that much control in Form Based Codes as far as privately owned private spaces within building. That might be amenities and this is definitely something real, a real space and can, you know, spread out into the streetscape. So I think that's important on all the buildings. And then just the parking aspect clarification has been good because there is discussion about zero minimums. And I think that's going to be something that'll have to be flushed out with the public transportation and the decoupling of the, well, the parking from rents, which is good. Hopefully save money. And, but it will be some growing pains and it's all good discussion. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Cambianica and I'm going to cede my time to Fred Weiss.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Fred Weiss. I'm going to go out over the handout here first. This is a bit tongue-in-cheek, but I'll explain it. The first drawing is the great drawing that Julian Berg did for an imaginary building at the car wash site. And this is on the, that the city supplied. And then on the second page, I took the building and put it on a Google Earth view. So you can actually see how it looks in Arcata. The third page is what is not going to happen in the Gateway Plan. Okay? Where we have five-story buildings scattered all over the place. But I think people may think that this is what it is and it needs to be cleared up. So, but the second page, I'm liked very much and because it gives people an idea of how things fit in. Okay? This model I made about 25 years ago, this is a house in Arcata that was built. And I want to, I'll talk about this in a minute. The value of models, it gives some reality to something. Possibly the Julian Berg design can be made into a model. I've got a lot to say and I'm just going to be talking about future engagement, my ideas. What David spoke about, I think I can either put in writing. There's too much for me to say. I did have a question. What is the date here? Is potential planning commission dates? Okay. So, these are ideas and suggestions. There's not, things I think are necessary, things that can be thought about. Okay? First, recognize COVID greatly affected this whole process. I propose we have walks again. I did not go in the walks. I had an at-risk person in my pod. There may have been other people like that. Perhaps two or three walks would be great. What I find missing is a connection with people. There's words, figures, drawings. That's why I brought the model and that's why I made this. I mean, I showed this. On my website, I have aerial views. Gives people a sense of what's really happening here. The, so we look at what it takes to connect with people. The, in terms of developing the Form Based Code, I had the idea of having an online spot. I don't know if this is possible, kind of like a shared Google Doc, that one for the planning commissioners, one for the public and committee members and all others. And people will put in their ideas. It would not be a poll. For example, if someone said only four stories, someone said not higher than four, it would just count it once. It would have to be anonymous to fit in with the Brown Act. And as I say, it would not be a vote, just be for suggestions. A model, as it could be made of this, we talked about, you know, as David said, there's a conundrum. You can't have a draft of people to talk about. Perhaps it could be something that's, you have to find the right word for it. Not even a proposal, just a starting point for conversation. Have a roundtable meeting with the public. I'm also in favor of having an open house, Friday and Saturday. I know it's a lot of work, but I think the one a year ago was great and things have changed since then. The 3D capabilities have not been utilized to the extent that they could be. The McKinleyville Town Center, they have a little flyover on the 3D models on arcata1.com. One thing I hear, I'm sure I only, you know, meet one-twentieth as many people as you do, but people say they've already decided what they're going to do and my involvement won't change anything. Well, the nutty thing is that I started hearing this a year ago. Okay? So I try to tell people that is absolutely not true. The, but the timeline that had things ending in December, I think really affected people's ideas. So the more realistic the timeline can be, the more people understand that there's plenty of time to talk about this stuff. The planning commission is scheduled for two meetings in June to review the Form Based Code. This is my opinion. I'm not saying this with a crystal ball. It's a fact. It will be a very rough draft. They have not given much input to Ben Noble about how, what we need to see. The city might want to consider bringing in someone from the outside to do public engagement. The possibility of a mailer or a mailer prior to the open house, if there is going to be one. And important, make a decision. I think people are really upset that nothing seems to be happening. I propose make a decision about L Street. It's very concrete. People can identify it. It has real outcome. I've talked to the architect Martha Jane. She will make drawings, which now, I think people have different ideas of what L Street's going to be. Is it going to be grass or, you know, a mall type thing? The, I attended two of the events of the 130, I mean, more than two, but two specifically for citizens and not much happened. A citizen wrote comments that there are very little public input, even in those instances. So something clearly needs to be changed to get this. And we have an opportunity with the Form Based Code. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred.
You can pass that around.
Oh, I didn't even see that come out. Very fun. Okay. I was so focused on you talking. I didn't see. Thank you, Fred. Go ahead, Joanne.
Okay, thanks. My name's Joanne McGarry at this moment. I really ditto what Fred just said. And when I took my trip out of Humboldt for the first time in three and a half years, a couple of weeks ago, I really was hoping I would stop at the Bay Model in Sausalito. I don't know if anyone here has ever seen it. But this tactile, visual, large-scale, accessible kind of concept, that's not just on a screen in a 3D type of thing. I sort of wish we could get the Army Corps of Engineers to build one for Humboldt Bay. So, you know, that would be a regional thing. But I think a lot of people like me resonate with that visual kind of concept and that picture of things. And so I really do ditto this engagement concept of bringing people around, you know, something that they can all look at and do. And I just think in my brief time volunteering for the space on Ninth Street that is a creative arts center for unhoused people and such, there's a gentleman there who's really into, like I am, the concept of domes and dome architecture. And he knows in Oregon, the dome guys. And I know the Pacific dome people up there as well. And I think we really are, you know, again, having this overview effect and looking at really being different in the future and not always just accepting what it's always kind of been. And I just think these models and different like dream and outrageous ideas will get the public more engaged. I know what got a lot of us engaged was when the draft came out and it was eight stories and we all went, what? And so I think we just need to keep encouraging people to plug in and including some of those people at the unhoused centers. Because it's going to be their place to live too, hopefully. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. Anybody else here in person? I think we got almost everybody except one person. But, okay. I'll let you be. We will move to online. Is there anybody online who is wishing to comment?
Yeah, our first speaker is Melody. Go ahead, Melody.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Melody Meyer. I'm an indigenous woman, a renter and resident of Arcata. I wanted to take a moment to express my concern about our housing shortage going on in Arcata. I strongly support the Gateway Plan and appreciate city staff and council members' efforts to make this a transparent process and continue to engage the public. However, I am worried that as the process has gone on with more public meetings and no final decisions, I've seen public participation decline and become less diverse and representative. So I agree with what some of the council members said with regard to public input being more valuable once we have a draft code to actually look at. Once we have a draft in front of us, I think that will draw on more underrepresented sections of the community who will feel ready to engage and have something to comment on in a more substantive way. I also urge you to not push back the deadlines for adoption of the Gateway Area Plan. The council should take this opportunity to establish and enforce clear targets or deadlines for the adoption and implementing the Form Based Code. The plan is going to be a key element of the city's strategy to address the housing shortage and to meet climate, economic and public safety goals. Its adoption is really urgently needed to ensure a more walkable, climate-friendly housing production. And so that staff can move on to other important tasks, including infilling planning for other parts of the city. I also would like to briefly request just an update, nothing in detail because I know there's confidentiality concerns, but an update about whether there has been consultation with tribes on the code or the plan. So just wanted to inquire about that. And that's it. Thank you for considering my concerns and I look forward to seeing progress on this issue.
Thank you, Melody. All right, our next speaker is Rebecca. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Hi. Thank you so much for taking my comment. My name again is Rebecca Buckley Stein and I'm the managing attorney for the Eureka Office of Legal Services of Northern California. And I'm commenting tonight to encourage the city council to direct staff to include housing affordability requirements in the Gateway Plan. The current draft does not include any provision that would require the development of affordable housing. It does mention planning for various income levels, but does not include any affordability requirements in the new development. The plan does seem to mention affordability by design because the units will be small. They will somehow be inherently affordable. But that is not a generally effective method for purposes of ensuring affordable units for diverse community members. And that doesn't work for two reasons. One, because small studio apartments are generally only appropriate for one or two individuals, not families or more than two people. And also there's no guarantee or requirement that small units will be rented at an affordable price. Provisions reserving a percentage of units for extremely low, very low, low and moderate income individuals should be included in the plan. Affordability requirements are especially important for very low income and low income people because without them, these families are likely to be completely excluded. There are many ways in which the city can ensure Gateway includes affordable housing and it can do so through mandatory or optional affordability requirements specific to Gateway or through citywide inclusionary zoning ordinances. Or it can do both. Inclusion of affordability requirements is consistent with the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing because it will aid in ensuring that Gateway housing is available to a diverse population. Additionally, Arcata's six-cycle housing element says that the city will consider implementing inclusionary zoning ordinances. Inclusionary zoning is when low or moderate income units are mandated in new housing developments, usually based on a percentage of units. Inclusionary zoning ordinances also prescribe the required level of affordability from very low income to moderate. I comment on this item to encourage city council to direct staff to include mandatory affordability requirements in the Gateway Plan. And in light of the massive development and that the city is planning, the continued housing shortage and being consistent with the city's own housing element, now is the time for the city to consider implementing inclusionary zoning citywide.
Thank you, Rebecca. That is your three minutes. I could tell you were getting near the end there. I didn't want to quite cut you off, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
More online comments.
We do. Call-in user two. Go ahead. Call-in user. Call-in user, can you unmute? All right, we're going to go to Kathy. Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. Kathy Chen applying. And I just wanted to speak to the engagement process. I think the engagement process has been a really rich, valuable and amazing process for the city. I really appreciate all the city has done to reach out and to listen. I think even the struggles have been very valuable for our community. My concern, one concern is that this could go on forever and I hope it does not. I'm glad to hear talk tonight of deadlines and timelines. I think that no project can be perfect and meet all needs and the housing and the climate crisis need for us to get this done. And this is not directly about engagement, but I just wanted to say about bikes that I hope that bike parking is prioritized as in covered, secure bike parking, not as a requirement, not a community benefit. And physical barriers around bike paths are integrated into the design. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy.
All right, we'll try call-in user two one more time. Call-in user, go ahead. They are still muted. Oh, go ahead. You're unmuted. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
This is, oh, good. This is Lisa Pelletier. I'm calling in to ask a question about the inclusionary zoning. I heard that that sort of went out the window and I'm wondering if that's true. I'd also like to echo the comments of Rebecca Buckley Stein who said that mandatory affordability requirements should be included in the Gateway Plan. And also, I'm wondering what percentage of units should, what percentage of the units are, you know, predicted to be affordable? Is it 10%, 15% for very low and low-income folks? And also, I just think that we need, we absolutely need inclusionary zoning or mandatory affordable requirements or low-income folks and very low-income folks are going to be left out of this plan. And it's just going to raise the rents in the area and you're going to see more homelessness. So I just hope you will give some consideration to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you Lisa. Okay, do we have any more online public comments? We do not. Okay. I did just, and I don't know if now is the appropriate time because that doesn't actually have anything to do with the Gateway Area Plan Engagement Process, but I know this topic of inclusionary zoning came up as well when we were talking about the Housing Trust last time. Would this maybe be an acceptable time for us to say, "Hey, maybe explore that," or is that something that the Planning Commission should look into? Or maybe if we all agreed, maybe we could give you a little direction, but...
Yeah, if I can address that and maybe a few other comments that came up.
Yes, please.
Just to kind of reflect back to people. So yeah, absolutely, there is the full intent to have an inclusionary zoning requirement in the Gateway Area Plan. I'm not sure, you know, I take it on face that it's not mentioned in the text of the area plan. That was certainly an oversight if so and/or, you know, just the way that the terms were used. But the document, right on the face of it, you know, in the mission statement is to create mixed-use, mixed-income projects. And so the way that we intend to do that is through inclusionary zoning. There's going to be a whole, you know, separate discussion on that with the Planning Commission. I'll, you know, flesh that out in more detail later, but yes, inclusionary zoning, yes. In addition, there are some community benefits that would allow people to go above and beyond the inclusionary zoning requirements to meet those community benefit requirements for getting the principally permitted pathway, the ministeral pathway. Question about the consultation with the tribe. Absolutely, we've done the mandatory AB 52 consultation, the 106 consultation, but we've also been having ongoing discussions with the tribes about, you know, the plan itself and how to integrate concepts that they have into the plan. So I would say deeper than legally required and happy to answer that question. In terms of doing more walks, we'd be happy to. The walks were one of the funnest parts of the engagement. And so I'll take the opportunity to just put out there to the public that you can reach out to us and we'll do a "will come to you" session. That could be a walking tour. It could be at your location. It could be here at City Hall. To the question about whether we're considering transportation, I don't want to get into too much detail, but there is a very robust emphasis on propping up and supporting alternative modes of transportation, including bus service. One of the concepts is to have as a community benefit that projects would provide bus passes to residents. In particular, if you're not going to have as much parking in this area, being able to have access to busing is going to be a necessity. One way to create that additional, those additional headways, that additional supply is through having more money poured into the busing systems. So that's definitely a component of it and be happy to talk more about that. And then to the question about parking and park-and-leave fees, I want to be real clear. Again, I've addressed this before, but I want to state it in unambiguous terms. The residential fee for new construction tax still applies throughout the entire plan area, throughout the entire city. There's a fee assessed on new development that's going to apply in this area as well. And then the last one, there was a comment about why aren't we doing noise studies, air quality studies, and various other studies that are required of CEQA? We are doing them. I'm not sure why there's a concept that we're not.
I had a quick question. If this is an appropriate time. Having a blind person or, you know, legally blind in my family, what Peggy Martinez had talked about, echoing of more outreach and just trying to get these stakeholders also involved in the process, folks that have disabilities. What are we doing? Can we do more? I haven't really heard of a whole lot of outreach with regards to people in wheelchairs, those who are blind, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Peggy did mention that we did a "will come to you" session and had, you know, stakeholder meeting with her. She attempted to, as she mentioned, bring more people to it. Not sure how many attendees there were. We do plan on having another outreach. I've corresponded with Peggy a couple of times. And in addition, there are, you know, several concepts around, you know, going above the building code for, you know, adaptability and certainly within the public sphere, there's a full intent to have those designed so that they're, you know, they're accessible. And I think, you know, we'd be going above and beyond ADA for those accessibility requirements.
I'm wondering if we might want to include reaching out to maybe the Lighthouse or Tri-County Independent Living, just as another opportunity for engagement.
What was the first one?
The Lighthouse.
Lighthouse, okay.
It's for the blind. And then I'm super excited about the walks. Yeah. And then, related to affordability, homeless supportive housing in the Gateway Area Plan. I know you talked that there wasn't anything to prevent a developer from doing that. Is there a way that we can incentivize a developer to do some kind of supportive homeless housing? I know that there's another, I think, another round of Home Key coming possibly. Is that something that we might look into to see if we could bring that to the table?
Yeah, absolutely.
And not to go off in the weeds too much, pun intended, but with the quickly diminishing cannabis industry, I've been speaking to a lot of folks about hempcrete and just thinking that because it's fire retardant, I believe it's 70% efficient, you know, it really retains heat. I think the fire department would love that it, you can hardly burn them. And, you know, it might be a great way that we would be the center of, you know, Northern California or even beyond of producing hempcrete up here and putting, just getting creative as Joanne had talked about, you know. So just throwing that out there. Little gift for you.
So what do you want from us? Do you want a motion?
It was an update. I think it would be good to just look at those timelines again.
I for one would like to really make sure that we stick to these timelines. I think that we need to, I would like to hear from the Planning Commission with their decision by the first meeting of July, which I think that what we talked about. I would like to see some kind of written draft of a Form Based Code sooner than later. I would like the public to note that they can still get in touch with us or you if they want walks or meetings. And that's my direction.
Yeah, I guess I would add the piece that even if it's like just a little taster to see some of the Form Based Code, maybe even at one of those meetings, just say, "Hey, we did this and we had these meetings and now, look, this is what we came up with," just to have even a brief idea to see like, "Oh, okay, that's how that translates." If possible, you know, before that draft date even, just to let folks see how that translates into the actual code from ideas.
And I was also wondering if it would be possible, I know that we have gotten a lot of feedback that, oh, you know, we haven't been heard, our ideas don't matter. It would be great if a lot of these emails and things that people are reaching out to you or us about could maybe get included in the agenda packet so people, everybody could read what everybody is writing, if it's possible.
You read my mind. Thank you. I concur.
I would defer to city manager on some of this, but I can tell you that we went through a couple of different iterations on how to manage the public comment. Right now, all public comment that comes in through email or, you know, if we get handed something, we'll scan it. And then I believe we have a twice monthly schedule for posting those to our website. So they go up on the website at that time. Any email that comes into staff that isn't addressed to, you know, the Planning Commission and it's intended, you know, either, you know, in the heading or it's obvious that it's information for the Planning Commission, we forward those emails as soon as we get them so the Planning Commissioners can see them, you know, likewise to the city council, I think. I know you get written correspondence as blue folder items that go into your packet. Those get uploaded to the agenda after the fact. At this point, that's the current protocol. So what we found was managing expectations around when someone can actually submit a comment and then see it in the packet was really difficult to manage. And this gave us a much more streamlined way, a much more regular way of being able to, you know, upload that information and get that out to the public.
In addition to that, the city clerk and I have been working on a policy and this stemmed from a conversation the council had a bit a time ago, but around your regular agenda item number 12, it does say oral and written communications. So the concept is to set up an email box that's basically just councilcomment@cityofarcata.org. That is not live yet, so please don't send emails there.
I love that.
And people would send in comments that they wanted attached to the agendas to that box because often people communicate with you and they don't want that released into a public agenda. So we would know anything coming into that box would be redacted. They wouldn't put, you know, we'll have some guidelines. Don't put your phone numbers, don't put addresses because we're not going to go through if we get a lot of info and be able to redact all of that. But if they want to put it into that email box, then they would know that it would go on to the next available agenda. The deadlines for that are about eight days prior to either a Planning Commission or a council meeting, but I do still think that a lot of people would hit those deadlines, you know, if there were comments that were important about kind of these ongoing agenda items. That's in the works.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, I was wanting to, in this, I'm hearing from the community that the website isn't super user-friendly and so I'm trying to find out, like, if somebody wants to find a letter submitted, they would go to, for say, for the Gateway, would there be a different place for something, a different, you know what I mean? How do you find them? There's no central location, is there, for letters? You have to figure. And then how does the public even know to go look for the letters? I just, I've been hearing from everyone that they would love to see them in the packet. I know that that's work-intensive in managing the expectations, but we're getting them, but I don't know that the public is seeing all the letters and I think that's super important.
Yeah, I think, and Director Laura is going to pull up where they are on our website right now, if you want to see. And we can go through this too when we meet. But in essence, I think for a large planning project like this, the idea of housing everything in one site is a place where people will go and they'll just start to peruse and go through all of the information. I think the idea of publishing things with the agenda is that they are timely for things that are going to be before you. I don't quite frankly think that people are going to go back and search council agendas for public correspondence per se. You know, on this topic, they're going to go here where they're all archived.
So if you just put in the search "letters," you don't get anything. You have to know to go, how to get involved, which isn't intuitive for me anyway, to say, "Oh, that's where I'm going to find the public input in the letters." How would anybody know that that's where the letters are? Or maybe it's just me. I don't know.
Yeah, so the staff reports for the Planning Commission have the link, the direct link to where the letters are housed. We can, you know, work on messaging for this. This "How Do I Get Involved?" does have a, you know, lot of different information on it in addition to the letters. But if you Google "sirp" and "Arcata," the first hit is this webpage. You land on this webpage and you click on "How Do I Get Involved?" If you go down below, there's a "Submitted Comments" link about midway down the page. You click on that "Submitted Comments" link and it lists out the comments that are in the date ranges that they're published in.
So the average person doesn't know what "sirp" is? They don't understand that acronym? Well, we actually had a planning commissioner who asked me what it meant, so there you go.
You can also get here by Googling Gateway and Arcata. There are several ways to land here through Google. I agree that our webpage is not as intuitive and user-friendly as a company's webpage is. We're municipal government. We don't have the same resources. I wish we did. But we will do what we can to try and better message this and to try and reorganize this within our means. If you read the, if you look at the staff reports, the staff reports should at this point all have a link to this page to tell you to find, you know, comments there. And so people should be able to find comments from as recent as February 24th following this link and we're uploading them in batches. So if I can just recap, I just want to make sure I have the direction correctly because there were a couple of different things. So hear from the PC by July. Bring the code early if we can. And there was a question about add comments to the agenda and I think we've resolved that. I just want to make sure I've got that clear.
And let people know that if they want walking meetings or one-on, or you come to them, that you're available. You can invite us. One of us can be there. We're all happy to, you know, come.
And, you know, flow for finding information and messaging just about, "Hey, you want to see what's been said? Here's how you get to it." All right. Is that it? And we got some bathroom breaks that need to happen. All right. We will take a quick five-minute break as we bring back our recused council members and before we go to our next item. and before we go to our next item. All right. So thank you, everybody, for your participation on our last item about the Gateway Area Plan Engagement, and we are now moving on to new business. So item A under new business this evening is to adopt Resolution Number 223-34, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adopting homebuyer down payment assistance for the Community Land Trust Acquisition Only Program Guidelines and authorizing a budget appropriation to fund the program in the amount of $100,000. Can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loia? You're busy tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I do want to note that, you know, when this issue came before you at your last meeting, we had some sort of late-breaking news from our home program that really shifted gears on, you know, the strategy that we had laid out previously. And so we kind of feverishly put together some options and, you know, kind of threw it at you last minute without a PowerPoint presentation. And there was a lot of information to digest. At the end of the day, I'm going to ask that you adopt this Resolution 223-34 and appropriate the funds to run the program. It'll create a down payment assistance program for a community land trust that will aim for approximately 20% loans, deferred payment loans, to qualifying buyers so that they can purchase these land trust homes. There'd be other, you know, fees included in there. Loans might be slightly higher than 20%. There are details, but super high level. That's what we're asking you to do here tonight. And that is the primary component of the staff report. Recognizing the hour, I wanted to pause and ask, do you want to learn more right now about community land trust and the options that I presented last time? Or just take it at this point, understanding that there's, this program is really a Band-Aid for a very short-term fix that buys us a little bit of time to analyze in more detail what sustainable community land trust would look like or whether or not we need to shift gears and do something different.
All I want to know is, do we have the budget for it?
We do have the budget in our Housing Fund to fund this $100,000. It would take the rest, basically, the rest of the budget in the Housing Successor Fund.
And that's okay? Are we saving it for anything else?
Well, the, you know, historically, so the Housing Successor Fund is the leftover funds from the redevelopment agency. We'll have some revenues generating back into that fund because we do have money out on various loans, mostly homebuyer loans, but also project loans that will be coming back in. That is, in some ways, a sinking fund because we don't have new sources of revenue. When the state wound down redevelopment agencies in 2012, they essentially eliminated that constant funding source. It's one of the major problems that we're having with this community land trust right now is because we don't have that resource anymore. So, you know, so I guess I would say that there are many things we could do with these monies that we, you know, haven't gotten the chance yet to talk about. They could have been, you know, seed money for a housing trust to help us, you know, with a self-help program that would help leverage other funds elsewhere. But we're in kind of a, you know, crisis mode with the sales that have occurred recently on, or that are occurring in the land trust, and we just don't have any other source to look to, really.
No, and I, you know, remember the presentation from the last council and I'm good with it. Looks like your house, Fred.
I feel like you gave us a great presentation last time and we had a really good discussion about this and the importance and the need for the gap funding for, you know, so that people that are wanting to sell their houses that are there, you know, we can attract buyers for them. So I don't feel like I need the slideshow, but I'm open to it if other council members would like to do that.
I just want to clarify, so we'll still have $30,000 plus any limited, albeit limited revenue that might come in to go back into with the other $30,000, right? We're only using 100 of the 130, is that correct, of the successor fund?
Yeah, there's approximately $130,000 in the fund right now, and then we have outstanding loans that, you know, if those pay off, that'll be revenue in. And then when these homes sell, we'll be repaid as well, if they sell, you know, if they don't go into foreclosure, you know, there is that risk.
So I just wanted to say that 19 years ago, I was able to get a gap fund loan from the City of Arcata, and without that, I wouldn't own my, I guess it's not a condo, it's a planned unit development, an apartment, townhouse. But without this, you know, who knows where I would be? So I'm very grateful and I don't really need to see anymore. I'm ready to vote when anybody else is.
Well, the only thing I wanted to say, you didn't know if you were going to be able to pull this off when we saw you at the last meeting and you were able to figure out how to make this work. And I think it's really admirable that that's happened.
Okay, I want to be real clear. We did not figure this out. This is a short-term fix. If we have three more units come up next week, these monies are gone. I don't have a way to fix that. So what we're doing is we're putting a Band-Aid on a very, you know, an emergent situation. It's a very short-term fix. We're going to spend the next several months. Beth has contracted with a consultant who's helping her work through some options for the CLT, and so she's got some, you know, professional assistance to help guide us through that process. And we're also evaluating other concepts like, you know, do we go to equity co-op model or, you know? So there are lots of ways. One thing that's in this presentation that I wanted to share with you that, you know, might shift your thinking about the sort of implications of this program is that, on average, the owners of the CLTs are earning about $6,000, $5,000 to $6,000 in equity, in equity growth because of the way the CLT is structured. It's not like an open market home where you realize all of the equity. They're limited to 20% of the equity there. So I look at that and I say, you know, look, if we can't fund this through, you know, periodic investments to a first-time homebuyer, maybe we find a way to create a one-time large investment. The money stays in those homes and then people get an equity share, kind of more of the co-op model. They're probably going to earn about the same amount of money. Most of these homeowners are staying in their homes for about 10 years, and within that 10-year period, the market is adjusting to the point, for those who've had markets adjust upwards anyway, they're adjusting to the point where they're getting, you know, somewhere between, you know, $3,000 and $10,000, generally speaking. We have one owner who's been in a wind song since it was first created and they got a, you know, $44,000 equity share. That was 20% of the equity growth. So, you know, there's more information that we certainly want to share with you when we talk about the long-term resolution, but don't have it figured out now. I don't want to misrepresent that.
A few weeks ago, when you brought this to us, you didn't know if you were going to be able to even find a Band-Aid.
Yeah, part of the reason for that change is because we have, we have a couple of units coming up, and the old program, the guidelines that were before you last time, provided for up to 49% financing. We certainly don't have the funds, even $130,000 to fund two or three at 49%. What we've done to make sure that we can, you know, fund all of the projects that are likely to come up over the next year is to change it so it's a 20%. We're shooting for 20%. The guidelines actually allow us to flex up a little bit in case there are closing costs because one of the primary objectives behind our program is to make sure that the borrower is borrowing on the private market 80% or less of the sale price so they don't have private mortgage insurance. It's a standard loan, so.
How long is your presentation?
I could probably do it in 10.
Oh, let's do it. I'd love to do it because I said, you told us it would be a good way to educate us, and so 10 minutes, I'm more than willing to be educated in 10 minutes.
You've already put the work into it. I would listen.
Seven minutes.
Okay, cut me off at seven.
I'm watching you. No, I'm just kidding. That's what I always do with my students because 10 minutes is too long, but five minutes isn't long enough, so seven minutes is the sweet spot.
Seven is the sweet spot. Okay, cut me off at seven. Give me notice when I am too.
Educate us.
Okay, so just real quick, what is a community land trust? You basically separate the house from the land. The land is owned by the CLT. The house is owned by the person. We created this a long time ago. Back in the day, the home program was giving guidance for how to create CLTs. They put out this guidance that said that community land trusts are one of the most effective means of assuring permanent affordable housing. They were all behind it. They were all in. We sunk hundreds of thousands of dollars into this program based on their suggestion. How do we do this? When there was a subdivision that would come in, the city would use its inclusionary zoning to carve out a couple of those parcels that were subdivided. The agency would purchase that land, sell it to Housing Humboldt, our partner. They would build on it using loans that we loaned them to do the construction financing. And then we would then use our home or agency funds to fund the sales to individuals. Where are the land trusts? We have nine in the Wind Song, 10 in James Creek Meadows, and three in Plum Village, built in the early aughts, the mid, and later aughts. Plum Village is West End Road, just before you cross, underneath the freeway, off to the left-hand side, Aloha Way. So what are the key terms for buying and selling of these homes? The way that they're structured, both in the programmatically and the underlying deeds-on-title? The homebuyer has to have 80% less area meter income in annual income, and that varies by housing size, and I'll show you an example of that. They have to be able to get a private first mortgage that's greater than 50% of the sale price. So we can only fund, historically, it's been 49%, but certainly this program's slightly different. They have to agree when they buy the house that they're going to sell it at a resale-restricted price. So there's a formula that we run. They don't get full market value. It ensures that the homes will be affordable to people into the future. And then their seller equity is capped at 20%. They only get 20% of the increase. They do get, there are some other nuances. They do get the money back that they paid down in the loan, less the portions that they paid to interest and so on and so forth. But, so what does that look like? The initial appraisal, this is the formula we run, when they purchased the house, let's say it was for $185. Let's say the sale appraisal was $195. That's a difference of $10,000. That's the equity growth. That seller would get $2,000 in that growth in equity. That's all they get. They don't get the 10. They don't get anything that would have been out in the market. They just get two. So on average, of the homes that have sold over the last, you know, 20 years that we've been running the program, $4,650 is the average equity earned. Many people earn nothing in equity. Some, like this outlier, earn, you know, $44,000. So they're walking away with their earned equity, $4,650, plus whatever they've paid down, less whatever they have to pay us because we have a loan with them as well that accrues interest over time as well. And that has implications I won't go into. So what happened? Loss of redevelopment in 2012 and loss of home financing in 2017 where they said you can't create new CLTs, but you can continue to find existing. And then the loss of home in 2023 when they said, you can't use our money for CLTs, period. CDBG was a go-to for a while when we were having those problems with home, but then restrictions that were implemented, both programmatically and with regard to our program income accounts, made it so that CDBG wasn't really a means for financing the individual homebuyers. And then the loss of inclusionary zoning in 2014 and the lack of subdivisible land, each went towards not creating new housing parcels for us to create new projects on. There are other ways to create these. We can go out and buy houses off the market. Someone takes a loss on that house and then you put it into the community land trust, so that's a possibility. Together, these things made it so that we Together, these things made it so that we don't have the ability to create new CLTs and we don't have the ability to fund new CLTs. What else happened? Well, the volume of sales are too low in the open market, uh, to maintain a program. We used to have a home program grant all the time and we would fund, uh, we've historically have funded ten sales a year. Um, but right now, everything's cattywampus. The median home sale price in Arcata is around four sixty. Homes two thousand twenty-two limit, purchase price limit, you can't buy anything higher than this, is three forty-two. You can't get there from here. You cannot do an open market sale. In addition, someone who, let's just say that, you know, we're not median. We found a house that's under median and it's three forty-two. Uh, so for a house that sells at three forty-two, the household would have to go out and get a private mortgage. And to make the payments on three forty-two, that household, if they had a three-person household, would have to make between fifty-six one hundred to be eligible for our program, and at the low end, fifty-five four hundred to be qualified for a loan that was enough to pay for the home. So you're, you know, through the eye of a needle here, uh, you know, just a couple thousand dollars in annual income. That limits the number of people who can actually do that. Let's say you have a four-person household. The range is slightly bigger, but still less than ten thousand dollars and still fairly low income. And so that really hampers the ability to run an open market program. Hence, the CLT is the only thing that we've been doing lately, but the CLT volumes are too low and they come in these periodic waves. We built, we built nine units, sold nine units. They stay in the homes for about nine, ten, eleven years. Those transition. We built ten units. We sold ten units. They go in waves. We built three units. So we have these periodic waves where people are saying, "I've got enough equity. I'm going to go do something else with my money now." Um, and that's problematic, trying to run a sustainable program when you don't have a fund that is consistently funded, dedicated for this purpose. So what are the options? We can keep the program as it is and cultivate new sources of fund. You just approved Cal Home application. Um, it's very competitive. Don't know if we'll get it, but this is a potential opportunity. Uh, we can modify the program. One concept here is to allow the program to float up to a hundred and twenty percent area median income. That would bring in more qualified buyers. It would allow for more buyers to participate in, uh, the program. We wouldn't be narrowing that pool to such an extent. Um, and then what you are considering approving tonight is changing it so it's a twenty, twenty percent down payment assistance program, excuse me, program instead of forty-nine percent. The hundred and twenty percent area median income is a structural fix. That's going to take a long time. It involves modifying the documents that are underlying the CLT, not just changing a program and then writing a new loan document. The twenty percent down payment assistance thing, the very next time this thing sells, we just change the loan documents. That's simple. We could switch to another equity model. I mentioned co-op housing. There are probably other models out there. They may in fact yield the same kind of return on the investment. If you're there for ten years, you get five thousand bucks back out of it. Um, so that's, that's a viable option in my opinion. Or, you know, we could just switch to a rental market. If we're really trying to target very low-income people, what we've seen in our programs anyway is that, um, a lot of the times, those folks are, don't have the means. The idea is like, you'll get in on a first-time homebuyer and then your means will grow as you, as you age. What we found with a lot of folks that are in this program is that they barely eke in and they stay at that income level. And then it's a burden for them to own this home, that they have to replace the roof on. They have to change the water heater on. They have to buy the appliances for, and so on and so forth. And so switching to a rental model, um, while it's, you know, we'd be giving up the, the, the ownership component to it, we would still be retaining the affordable housing component to it um, and keeping those homes local, uh, affordable. That's my presentation.
So my least favorite would be-
Eight minutes, sounds good.
My least favorite would be to turn it into a rental. I really feel like this is the only homeownership opportunity for those who, um, have very limited incomes. Um, with a Band-Aid solution, um, I'd like to motion to adopt Resolution Number two-two-three dash three-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adopting homebuyer down payment assistance for land, community land trust, uh, land trust acquisition, only program guidelines and authorizing a budget of appropriation to fund the program in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table, and we are going to take public comment now. Um, so we will start if there's any in-person public comment on the land trust item. Line it up.
Fred Wise, very simple question. If it becomes a rental, are there affordability requirements that are maintained that the landlord has to preserve? So it's not such a bad thing in that sense? Okay. It's, I find it discouraging that people can live there and only have so, so little equity. But I know, I know that's the structure of the program. So what we normally see as a rental and what we normally see as ownership are not quite the same in this instance, it sounds like. Thanks.
I see some nodding from the staff table. Okay, thank you, Fred. Um, anybody else in person wishing to comment or we will skip to Zoom? Okay, are there any Zoom comments about the community land trust this evening?
There is. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, I agree with the proposed action and continuing the program for homeownership. After you rent a place for ten years, you walk away with nothing. So if a buyer can walk away with even as little as four or five thousand dollars, I think it's a win for the community. Ownership also brings pride of ownership and more, greater investment in the community. Thank you.
Okay, there's no other online comment for this item. Okay.
So I just, oh, can I just say this one thing, um, is that Rudy Ramp is the one that really pushed for land trusts many years ago. And he kept talking about how it would be a real benefit. And it's, it, it definitely was when we went into it. But now it's really a difficult situation to be in. And I think about the, um, the manufactured homes that we have down on South, uh, or, you know, on South G Street or H Street, G Street, down there. Um, and how those are going to manage. We don't, we don't manage those though. So we don't have to actually worry about that. But I would worry about those too, because they'd be in a similar situation. Anyway, I will vote yes on this motion when it's called for.
Okay, well, we do have a motion and a second on the table, and we have taken public comments, so if we're ready to vote, let's vote. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right, and with that, um, that takes us to item number twelve on our agenda this evening, which is oral and written communications. A city appreciates public input and this time is provided for people to address the council or submit comments on items that are not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, we cannot discuss or take actions that are not listed on the posted agenda. And at the end of oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. And requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Um, this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes, so if you are here in person, line on up. Look at that. Um, or if you're on Zoom, please press star nine. If you're, or if you're on the phone, um, wait, sorry. Raise your hand if you're on the Zoom webinar or press star nine if you are on your phone. Um, all right, so we will invite folks in person up to speak first and then, uh, Zoom, and we will not go back and forth. So take it away.
Hello again, Patricia Kombianika. I'm going to cede my time this time to Jim Becker.
I promise not to abuse this. I just tried to read this a few times and I just couldn't do it in three minutes, so I won't take too much of your time up. Um, and this is in relation to Rails to Trails, not Rails to Road. Um, located at L Street between Alliance Road, south of Samoa Boulevard, the L Street Corridor is home to Arcata's Rail to Trail Pathway, residents and businesses, the Arcata Creamery Building, and undeveloped open spaces. The central portion of the pathway lies within the Creamery District, bordering the L Street Pathway. North and south of the Creamery, open spaces are understated, peaceful, and complement the existing landscape of the trail. Uh, the landscape consisting of wetlands and grasslands can be preserved and enhanced and to complement future linear park. For a number of reasons, I believe the Arcata, sorry, Arcata L Street Corridor should be designated as a linear park and not degraded into a truck route. It's common for U.S. cities to seek out existing undeveloped corridors to establish linear parks. L Street is a diamond in the rough, consisting of a pathway and a right-of-way, which is already established. The overall footprint can be increased by rail banking the existing right-of-way, a process whereby the railway right-of-way, I said that anyway, is preserved and other uses beyond trails such as linear parks can be utilized for the corridor. Across the nation, rail banking has served to create vast non-motorized transportation networks. The great Redwood Trail, a work in progress in conjunction with the California Coastal Trail, will connect over fifteen hundred miles of non-motorized routes the length of California. L Street will be the welcome mat. Arcata's L Street Trail, Rails with Trails Corridor is a vital segment of the Humboldt Bay Trail, the link between the future great Redwood Trail and Annie and Mary's Trail. The L Street path is the heart of the non-motorized transportation artery from Cal Poly south to the Arcata of Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary, well, south to it. In conjunction with future infill, the corridor will serve as the linkage between nearby walkable neighborhoods to destinations to Arcata and beyond. As a hub for numerous users along the pathway, L Street is an ideal location for a linear park. There is no end, no need to reinvent the wheel. In two thousand and ten, the city of Arcata proposed a vision for the L Street with Rails with Trails Linear Park. The two thousand and ten Rails with Trails proposal included a concept plan for the L Street Corridor. In the current version of the Gateway Traffic Plan, it is proposed the rail banking the existing North Coast rail line, not for enhancements, but instead for the road expansion, turning L Street into a southbound track route. The road expansion would pave over existing open spaces and wetlands permanently altering, altering the existing surroundings. South of A Street, the balance of the L Street Corridor is in the coastal zone. Due environment, due to environmental impacts, this segment of L Street should be enough to remind that an alternative proposed truck route should be presented. In the review of the draft, after considerable discussion, the city of Arcata Transportation Safety voted in favor of recommendation to designate L Street Corridor as a linear park. Committee Chair Dave Ryan encouraged the city engineers and transportation planners to revise the plan and to eliminate the area for consideration for new streets and car traffic. Um, just in, to bind the stone, the city's, uh, the Sierra Club Redwood Chapter North Group has endorsed this to designate as a linear park. Um, the preservation of open space along L Street Corridor offers an opportunity for enhancements of natural features that can serve as both active and passive transport recreation. Uh, paving over these open spaces of L Street Corridor would represent a missed opportunity. I do encourage the city council to preserve and designate the existing L Street Corridor as a linear park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
It's been about three and a half weeks since, uh, the tragic earthquake in, in Turkey. And there's been a number of, uh, articles in the newspaper about that, specifically comparing to California. It's a similar fault lines, uh, and it's, potentially, this is the same intensity that we're going to get. The last one that hit was in nineteen oh six in San Francisco. And then another large earthquake of the same magnitude was, I believe, in about eighteen fifty-seven. So we're, so, so sort of, uh, overdue for one. So we really need to focus on, um, especially since we're, we're facing all this growth in the future that we're going to be building on the appropriate type of, of land. And I would point out in San Francisco, um, where we saw major damage, damage was in the Marina District. All, all these wetland areas, basically, liquidification happened in those areas. So I would strongly suggest that you understand the historical, uh, maps of this area, because we have a lot of levees. We have a lot of fill. And, you know, you have to ask yourself, where are we building? Are we building an appropriate, um, place that was going to be a safe place for the next hundred years? Next a hundred and fifty years? Are we going to have, you know, devastation similar to Turkey because of not, um, making the wise decision? So I, I think this is like, probably one of the most important things that, um, you're all going to face in decisions on where to put people in the city. And there has been a number of, um, you know, pretty strong letters that have been written from, you know, pretty, um, you know, experts, I would say, from Cal Poly that have PhDs. They've written letters that are in the newspaper, and they have quite a, they have a lot of concerns about where, um, some of this housing that the city is proposing to go. So I would highly recommend you, if you haven't read those letters, um, to read them and make sure that you're making the right decision, because unfortunately, for the last seventy years in the United States, and you could say in the world, you know, there's been government that has made really poor decisions on where to put housing. And in, in the case of the United States, you know, states, the federal government are potentially looking at billions and not trillions of dollars of trying to address these climate, um, issues that were, they thought were appropriate places to put people. And we see this, you know, every year, uh, every few weeks. Uh, it could be Florida, it could be California. And so we need to take this seriously and make the right decisions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanne McWeary again. And, um, I like to talk about three things sometimes when I get up here at the podium. And I've been busy since I returned from my trip. And, um, one of the things I did was attend an emergency preparedness event at the Humboldt Bay Fire on Sunday and got some, gathered some great information about, um, emergency preparedness for all of us in whether it's earthquakes or fires or whatever. And I gathered some literature and some information. I understand I might actually look into CERT, which is the volunteer group that does emergency response. And I understand that the city of Arcata actually had some staff that went through training for that, which is really nice to know. Um, I did also attend last night's Eureka City Council Q and A when they were talking about, um, houselessness. And, um, there were a lot of great things brought up at that thing as well. And I encourage you to maybe, um, look at it and call some information about it, because working together in our region is vitally important, because the homeless situation has no boundaries. Um, the third thing I did was I have a friend who lives up at The Grove. And, um, my friend and I and another person went to the movies together. And we saw a film, a very powerful film that I saw first when it came out in nineteen eighty-nine called Do the Right Thing by Spike Lee. And, um, I'm just wanting us all in our community to do the right thing. And the D Street Neighborhood Center and CERT, the American Red Cross, we're in an emergency, a crisis, just like a hurricane or an earthquake or a fire. And I want to take this last minute to do what Dev said last night, this last minute to remember Nancy Barnes and the Nancy I met today and have silence for the rest of my time.
Um, just a little, my name's Fred Wise. Just a little follow-up on what I said earlier about my friend in Atlanta. What he has there is, um, twenty percent of his apartments are market rate. Uh, sixty percent are workforce affordable. So the market rate, let's say it's twelve hundred or thirteen hundred dollars for one bedroom. The workforce affordable is be like nine hundred or a thousand for a one-bedroom. And the other twenty percent is thirty percent income. So it's for people who are, uh, so they're paying about four hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom. He gets the balance of that, but the balance of that seventy percent from the government. And that's what enables him to have the workforce affordable housing. Um, it's all studio, one and two-bedroom. He says he cannot really help families with three-bedroom. Doesn't, doesn't work in his pro forma. Um, he's a nonprofit. He doesn't make money. Um, and he's sending this up as a template that if it's successful, it could expand across the country. That's the basics. I'll let you know more when I know more, whether it could be applied. That's the basics. I'll let you know more when I know more, whether it could be applied here. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. All right, if, yeah, nope. I'm just looking out at the audience here. Okay, we'll take it to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom?
I see no public comment online.
All righty then. Well, that takes us to council and staff reports. So city manager, do we have any staff updates? All right, let's start at this end this time, and we'll just go down the line. Alex, we'll start with you if you have any updates for the council.
Well, today I attended the HTA meeting, and they are in the process of coming up with one system where you can use your credit card, your debit card, or you can use your pass, if you buy a pass, and it's a tap system to pay. And your tap gives you, for $2, you have two hours. So you can come and go as many times as you want to get off and on the bus. And they're looking at being a universal system throughout Humboldt County, so we can all use that. They're going to be putting in a microtransit system in McKinleville, which will help people get around in McKinleville and also take, go to the airport. The Samoa Transit, which they have been running for the fiscal year, they find that ridership is about 2.5 people a day. It's cost about $300,000 to do that. And they are going to be letting that go come the end of the year. And they'll be having some kind of a dial ride system working there. And lastly, what I think is really important is for us to think about how we're going to move more into the system of HTA and look at what you, how Eureka did it, and that we should move that way, too. And I would like to have something on our agenda at the next meeting, if you're agreeable to it, so that we could then have HTA manage our drivers. They do all our maintenance for us now, but they would take on the system of running the drivers. We would be responsible for our schedule and how we wanted our schedule to operate, and also for our transit system, our transit system building, I should say, our building. So do you think there's a, do you all agree to that, that we could put that on our next agenda?
Definitely. And I know, maybe it hasn't happened yet, but this is something that the city manager and I have talked about, too, that there would be some studies kind of into that and working with Cal Poly to see, you know, what is going to be the best path forward for us.
I won't take an off-agenda item, but we'll be, we are ready to discuss it. I will just say that.
And they're, they're keeping their data for HSU or Cal Poly and also for CR, because CR also has a pass. And so that the city would get paid every month for that money. We just wouldn't have to count it or whatever it is. It would save that. So thank you very much for putting that on the next agenda, because if we're interested in doing this and we can move forward, we need to make an amendment to our current agreement. And they need to start planning in the budgeting cycle, and that starts in April. And it needs to go to their HTA board for approval. So thank you very much. The other thing is I have another item I would really like to have us bring up, and that is the zoning for Mad River Hospital. I would like us to look at that and make a decision if we really want them to have as much open space as they have. When this happened a number of years ago, there was a concern about agricultural land, a number of years ago, maybe 20, 25 years ago. And I would like to see the hospital actually operate, Mad River Hospital, operate more like a hospital and be able to have, they want to build a new hospital. They may end up having other facilities there. They definitely need to have workforce housing. And they have an opportunity, they could put more housing on there for doctors and people that maybe wanted to buy their house. Currently, they have quite a large farm that they're operating. And from that farm, they are feeding all of their patients. And they have their staff, and they also have a farmer's market. So thank you very much for allowing that to go on to the agenda, so we can discuss that. Because I believe it has to be top-down, not, that's the only way we're going to solve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Is that it? All right, down the line, here we go.
So I had an opportunity to do a ride-along with APD. And I rode with Luke Skion, and I got the grand tour of the town. I got to visit the ambassador where they meet over by the Transit Center, spoke to Fire Phoenix, and got some fantastic information. It was very enlightening. I would encourage anybody who hasn't done one to do one. I'm looking forward to doing another. As we were cruising, we saw a unhoused individual down. In fact, it looked really scary. I thought that maybe they weren't alive. But as it turned out, that they had too much to, they had imbibed in too much alcohol or something. And I saw two other officers come while we were there and treated him with kindness, compassion, and helped him get up and gave him a ride to the Boyd Road Shelter where he was staying. And I think he probably took a nice long nap and got some food. And, you know, he didn't get hit by a car that day. So I really appreciated what they did. I attended the regional, Redwood Regional Economic Commission, and they had a fantastic Cal Poly Humboldt campus physical update. So if anybody's interested, they do have a PowerPoint presentation that is available, I believe, to the community. If you want to check it out, it's well worth its time. And then last night, I attended the meeting also where Joanne went, the homeless. Well, first, I attended our city meeting for the Homeless and Housing Work Group. And then last night, I attended the city Eureka and Humboldt County special meeting on homeless and encampments. And in light that we lost another unhoused community member, this time it was a young adult at a bus stop, while it wasn't in Arcata, it's indicative of, we got to do something, and we got to do something now. Otherwise, people are going to continue to die. I'm super grateful for what we are doing countywide and as a city. But in response to what Joanne was saying, I wasn't aware that there's no guarantee that you'll get a room. So I'm wondering if there's any interest with council to explore additional options to fill in the gaps for Arcata House Partnership for additional extreme weather shelters, so that nobody is turned away and dies. So and then I'm not sure if this is the time, but I'm hoping to also put Anton's request on the possible agenda item for safety concerns for the school. And there's one more. Sorry, give me two seconds. Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I do have another one then I'll add, if you have a moment. I've been thinking about how we have dispatch and how we have, everybody has dispatchers within our county, and how maybe we should see if our city can help move forward one dispatch center for everybody. So I guess that would be a goal. I can put that on our goals. But I just wanted to mention it, because I think a lot about regionalism. And there used to be a time where I never thought that we should do regionalism. But I've actually changed my mind over the years. And I think having regional dispatch, HTA, Fire Department, and even think about the fact, can we do Arcata Police Department and Cal Poly? And is there any way we can make that work also?
Piggyback on that, one of the things during the redeck, Cal Poly physical update, is that they did confirm for sure that they're going to utilize Motel Six out in Geantoli Valley West, as well as Budget Eight. And, you know, everybody knows it's a rough neighborhood, and so they addressed that concern. It looks like UPD will be doing some off-site. They're going to have visibility there. There'll be boots on the ground. So I do like the idea of what Alex presented is some kind of collaboration between perhaps UPD and APD in those areas where they're very impacted and that there's a lot of students in the community. Thank you. Yes, in the barge.
It was on, it was on Colbert Report. So anyway, we're in the news. My updates, I did kind of allude and talk about one update earlier just from Equity Arcata, from sitting in with that group, that they will be doing some engagement with their partner organizations and reaching out to folks just surrounding policy updates for the Gateway Plan. So that's really exciting to see that involvement of Equity Arcata. And my other just major update, our CEA was very heavy on new members last time and, you know, getting to know everybody and kind of orienting a lot of our new board members. But one notable thing that did happen was we did have a request from the Yurok Tribe to join Redwood Coast Energy Authority and to join that JPA. And so our board unanimously voted to have the Yurok Tribe join the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. So we're really excited and looking forward to that partnership with the Yurok Tribe. And so their vice chairman is going to be the representative to that. And he was able to kind of join us at our last meeting. Power was out, out by where he was, kind of Klamath area. And so he was on the side of the road on his phone for part of the meeting, but he wanted to be there when we added him in. So it was great to see that. And I think those are the only major updates that I have.
We had the Arcata Chamber Business Leadership Award last week. I want to celebrate all the businesses that were there and participated and won awards. We also have a Chamber Mixer tomorrow at Humboldt Haberdashery, which I believe won New Business of the Year. So that's my update.
All right, thank you. So I am HCOG this week, which is Humboldt County Association of Governments. And we primarily focus on what's happening in, you know, with the road systems and also transit and bikes and pedestrians, pretty much all of that. And I thought that the community would be glad to hear that safety for pedestrians and bicyclists and alternative modes of transportation is definitely a top priority for that, for our board. And the Caltrans will be starting working on the Indianola Underpass. So that, you can already see some tree removal that's happening there. And obviously, that's going to be, you know, a while in the making, but it's underway. And so that's been many, many, many years, probably over 20, of discussion to get that going. And people have asked me about the pilot program for the road use charge that I had brought up and some people have tried to sign up for. And so I did ask about that at the, at our, at that TAC meeting last week. And they will be contacting people the second half of March. So if you've signed up and wanted to participate in that pilot program, they'll be, and they were very grateful to our community for participating. A lot of people did sign up, and so that was nice. For Arcata Main Street, the membership, we're having a membership drive and a ball coming up next week. And so looking for new members and also a way to celebrate at that ball. So if anyone's interested in being involved in Main Street, now would be a good time. And I want to thank the Arcata House Partnership for the emergency or the extreme weather shelter. And I know, I think lots of us here on the council volunteered there. And it's, they have extended the shelter to be running through Sunday and are definitely needing volunteers. Apparently, a lot of people have called and put a lot of pressure to open, but not a lot of people wanting to sign up. So if you have an interest in helping and ensuring that these types of things continue, please do sign up. And, oh, last but not least, in a meeting I was in, we were, kind of got off in a side conversation on the book Strong Towns. And it's one of the first books I read when I was running for council or maybe after I was elected, I don't remember. And it is a great, super interesting book, if you're at all interested in community development. It's, really focuses on via, like thriving neighborhoods, financial stability for towns over, you know, over a long period of time, and also to be climate resilient. So everything, everything really works together if you follow that model. And it's a really pretty interesting and easy read. So I would just suggest that if, for people that are, you know, interested and concerned with community development. And I think that's it. Thank you.
So there, can I do a quick reminder?
Oh, go ahead.
Just don't forget tomorrow is the deadline for the Form Based Code Survey at 5:00 p.m. And also just wanted to mention Stacy graciously gave me an introduction to HCOG, Beth. And I was able to do the new board orientation as an alternate, and it was super exciting. So I had no idea what HCOG was all about. So that was wonderful.
And tomorrow night is the Chamber Mixer at Haberdashery. And also at the pub is the, the Gobert Days will be there.
Wonderful. And yeah, I did see that's co-sponsored by Main Street as well, that mixer. So a little fun overlap of both the Chamber and Main Street.
And they're hiring an executive director.
And they're hiring an executive director. The Chamber is, yeah. Yeah. Stacy's like, wait, that's news to me. Yeah. Okay, and that takes us now to dates of future meetings. These have been confirmed, right, by us? So I'm just going to read them off, so everybody knows about them. But we will be having our goal-setting study session next Tuesday, March 7. It's already coming up at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. We're going to have our joint study session with the Planning Commission on Sea Level Rise. It's going to be Tuesday, March 28 at 6:00 p.m., again, here in the council chamber. And then we already have our budget study session on the books for May 9. And again, that will be here at 6:00 p.m. And with that, we are adjourned.